All right, can everyone please silence your phones as not to disturb this meeting? I call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the 34th City Council for March 22nd, 2022 at 7:30 PM. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Hamood.
Here.
Councilmember Abraham.
Here.
Councilmember Paris.
Here.
Councilmember Al Sowafi.
Here.
Councilmember Herrick.
Here.
Councilmember Burns.
Here.
Council President Serini.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Councilman Hamood.
Thank you, Council President Serini. At this time, it's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Shadi Azhar from Solid Rock Church of Dearborn, who will give the invocation at tonight's meeting. Everyone who is able, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh, my God, we are so thankful for blessing us in this country. Thank you for the blessing of these several servants for this city. Lord, I pray that you bless this meeting, bless the people attending, bless the people watching. Lord God, I pray that you impart wisdom, impart strength to the council people here, that they would take the right decisions for this city. Lord, I pray the spirit of peace and love and unity to be in this meeting, and we give you all the glory and all the honor. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Father. Appreciate that. Okay, first item of business, please.
Item four resolution by Councilmembers Burns and Hamood approving the minutes of the previous special closed meeting on March 2nd, 2022, the special meeting on March 3rd, 2022, and the regular meeting of March 8th, 2022.
Okay, is there any deletions, additions, or modifications to the minutes? Okay, hearing none and an answer will be attached. Next item, please.
Item five, ordinance number 22-1741 introduced by Councilwoman Burns, synopsis in ordinance to amend Chapter 18 titled Traffic and Motor Vehicles of a Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Section 18-278 entitled reckless driving.
Okay, the city's reckless driving ordinance, Section 18-278, needs to be amended to reflect the same penalties imposed by the state's reckless driving statute. The current ordinance is punishable by a maximum of 90 days in jail and/or a fine of $100. The change is required to mirror state law, which will now have the penalty be up to 93 days in jail, or a fine up to $500 or both, depending on the court. Amending the ordinance will help deter reckless driving by imposing stiffer penalties for drivers that violate the ordinance. The increased penalty will result in higher fines collected for law enforcement. This is the first of two readings. Do we have any questions or comments by my colleagues? Councilman Al Sowafi.
I do, but the chief is not here. Is the chief here?
I'm not sure if he's here yet, but we do have... No, I don't think he's here yet, but the Chief of Staff can speak on it, I believe, until he's here. Did you have a question?
I'll wait for the chief. Maybe other new business.
At the end of the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, any other questions or comments regarding this? It's the first reading, okay. Councilman Burns.
Thank you, Council President. I'm just very happy to see this item come forward. I look forward to the city and the administration pushing out more information on this so that our residents know that it's happening, they have that awareness, and they know that we are taking this very seriously so that they can in turn do the same. This is a really critical item, and I look forward to Chief Shaheen being here later on to maybe speak to it in more depth and answer some questions that council may have.
Okay. Are there any additional questions from the public? Okay, Mr. Clerk, can we have the first reading?
Yes, this is the first reading of ordinance number 22-1741, an ordinance to amend Chapter 18 titled Traffic and Motor Vehicles of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Section 18-278 entitled reckless driving. Resolution by Councilmembers Herrick and Hamood to table the ordinance.
Okay, unanimous roll will be attached unless I hear any objections. Hearing and seeing none, so is attached. Next item, please.
Item six, resolution by Councilmembers Burns and Hamood authorizing to participate in the State of Michigan Road Salt Solicitation for the 2022-2023 winter season and commit to purchasing 4,000 tons of road salt for early delivery and 3,000 tons of road salt for seasonal backup through the My Deal Cooperative Program and requesting immediate effect.
All right, thank you. And the Department of Public Works and Highways Division is seeking to authorize and participate in the State of Michigan Road Salt Consolidation for 2022 and 23 winter season and commit to purchasing 4,000 tons of early delivery salt and 3,000 tons for salt backup through the My Deal Cooperative Program. It is requested that the purchasing manager be authorized to make a commitment to purchase the salt through the My Deal Program and immediate effect is being requested in order to meet the state deadlines to commitment. Dearborn has participated in this salt purchase under the My Deal Program since 2000 and has benefited over the past several seasons when salt availability was limited and the prices were escalating. Any questions or comments on this item? Any questions from the public? Okay, unanimous roll will be attached. Next item, please.
Item seven, resolution by Councilmembers Herrick and Paris awarding a contract to the Michigan State Police in the amount of $277,200 for armed police services at Camp Dearborn for the 2022 operating season and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, Camp Dearborn is required armed police services through a third-party police agency to assist the general camp in policy oversight during the peak hours and times as determined by the Recreation Department. The Michigan State Police has performed successfully this contract during the 2019, 2020, and 21 camping season. This will allow the state police to continue the service for this upcoming season. The camp manager will oversee the contract with the Michigan State Police and the city, ensuring that all terms and obligations are being met as agreed upon by the Dearborn Chief of Police and the Michigan State Police. Any questions or comments on this item? Any from the public? Okay, hearing none, unanimous roll will be attached. Next item, please.
Item eight, resolution by Councilmembers Al Sowafi and Herrick authorizing the third of four one-season renewal options for the contract with Four Seasons Property Management in the amount of $280,372 for turf maintenance and requesting immediate effect.
All right, the city has a current contract with Four Seasons Property Management for turf maintenance for the city boulevards, medians, islands, and city parks and buildings. The contract included four one-year renewal options at original pricing and terms and conditions. So the Department of Public Works is requesting to initiate the third of four one-season renewal options and include new locations added to 2021. The Four Seasons Property Management has performed satisfactory under this contract. Immediate effect is being requested in order to place the contract before the prior more in season. Any questions or comments on this item? Any from the public? Okay, hearing and seeing none, unanimous roll will be attached. Next item, please.
Item nine, resolution by Councilmembers Herrick and Hamood authorizing the third of four one-season renewal options for the contract with Green Meadows Landscape in the amount of $64,520 for fertilization and weed control resulting in a new expiration date of September 2022 and requesting immediate effect.
All right, thank you. The city currently has a contract with Green Meadows Lawn...Lawn...LawnScape, I'm sorry, Incorporated for Fertilization and Weed Control. The contract included four one-year renewals at the same price, terms, and conditions as the original contract. Purchasing Division has requested that...has received and requested from the Department of Public Works to initiate the third renewal option for the September 22 season. The qualified contractor will perform fertilization and weed-controlling services for the city parks, building grounds, boulevards, as well as the city right-of-ways through the county as well. Green Meadows has successfully performed these services for the city for the last five years. Immediate effect is being requested in order to meet the contract deadlines. Any questions or comments on this item? Any from the public? Okay, hearing and seeing none, unanimous roll will be attached. Next item.
Item 10, resolution by Councilmembers Herrick and Burns authorizing the second of four one-year renewal options to Nickel and Saf Inc. through Midwest Employees Casualty Company in the amount of $79,943 for excess workers' compensation.
Okay, and the city's expiring work compensation coverage expires April 6, 2022. The coverage is currently secured through a same broker and carrier with an annual premium of $70,097. The increased premium for the 22-23 is now going to be $79,943, a 14% increase, which has contributed to the increase in the city's payroll by 6% and a $2,002 claim that is still being paid out by the insurance. It's recommended to renew this excess workers' compensation coverage from Nickel and Saf, our broker, through Midwest Employees Casualty Company Carrier. This renewal is the second of four one-year renewal options. This contract shall be valid from April 7, 2022 through April 6, 2023. The self-insured retention portion of the city will remain the same for our general employees at $600,000, but will be increased to $700,000 for our police and fire employees. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay, any from my colleagues? Any from the public? Okay, hearing none, unanimous roll will be attached. Next item.
Item 11, resolution by Councilmembers Burns and Herrick authorizing additional expenditures to Integra Realty Resources in the amount of $132,573 for qualified vendor appraisal services and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, the Assessment Department is requesting to authorize five appraisals to Integra Realty Resources for properties at 15,555 Lundie Parkway, 16,800 Executive Plaza, 3,300 Town Center Drive, 500 Town Center Drive as well...I'm sorry, there's two appraisals there...for appraisals costing as $49,500. These commercial properties average over 340,000 square feet each and require specialized commercialized appraisers. Ford Motor Company is owner of these properties and has filed assessment appeals for 2021 with the Michigan Tax Tribunal or MTT. The total tax evaluation in connection with these five properties is approximately $25,528,000. Should these five cases go to trial without these appraisals, the MTT could side with the petitioner and award their requested values. This would equate to a total loss of city tax dollars for 2021 of approximately $680,000. And also on Act 2022, with the city, tax loss projected to be close to $623,000. Integra Realty Resources has performed successfully under these previous contracts with the city. The Michigan Tax Tribunal has requested all five appraisals be submitted before June 20, 2022. It is expected that the appraisals will be completed by April 21st of this year. Any questions or comments on this item from my colleagues?
I have a question.
Yes, Councilman Abraham.
Could someone explain how the process to qualify this vendor through purchasing or through the assessor's office was done?
Good evening, Council President, distinguished council members. I'm Mark Rosensky, purchasing manager. This is done through what we call an SOQ, Statement of Qualifications. There are certain parameters to become qualified, and it goes out to a public solicitation. So they have to pass a certain amount of qualifications approved by departments in order to get onto this list. And they're on the list for this particular SOQ is three years and with a couple of renewals, one-year renewals. And this company is actually one of three that are remaining on the list right now.
So they were pre-qualified back in 2021. How were the rates determined for this contract?
It's the same as when they entered into the qualification list.
Okay. And so there were three vendors on the list that we select from, or do you go back to them for quoting?
We go back to the entire list to quote.
I got you. That's what I needed to hear. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions from my colleagues? Any questions from the public? Okay, unanimous roll will be attached. Next item, please.
Item 12, resolution by Councilmembers Burns and Paris authorizing additional expenditures to GNJ Construction in the amount of $141,826 for as-needed hardware installation and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, the city currently has a purchase order issued for a GNN construction project H45710 as-needed hardware installations, which has been previously approved by council resolution. The project was implemented as a multi-year contract to install new fixtures and update 343 apartment interiors through Hubbard Manor East and Hubbard Manor West. Currently, 290 units have been completed since March 2018. To complete the remaining units, DPW Housing is requesting an additional $141,826 to be added to the PO. The contractor has not requested any increase per unit cost and has performed successfully under the previous ongoing contracts with the city. Any questions or comments on this one from my colleague or from the public? Okay, hearing and seeing none, unanimous roll will be attached. Next item, please.
Item 13, resolution by Councilmembers Burns and Al Sowafi authorizing the mayor to execute the memorandum of understanding between the City of Dearborn and Healthy Dearborn to establish the 2022 Healthy Streets Initiative and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, Dearborn Healthy Streets is a program organized by Healthy Dearborn Coalition and are...I'm sorry, intended to slow and share transportation spaces to help residents find safe, healthy ways to get out and exercise and access essential services by providing greater access to public transportation right-of-ways. The program will run from April 11th through October 31st, 2022. Eight streets, up to 1.5 miles in length, are proposed for the 2022 program. The streets are Wilson, north of...I'm sorry, Wilson Street, which is North Silver Lane to Martha, Penn Street from Cornell to Monroe, again on Penn Street from Monroe to Otter Drive, Akron Street, Lori Street, Riverside Drive, Morley Avenue, and Oakwood Boulevard. It is being requested to authorize the mayor to execute the memorandum of understanding between the city and the Healthy Dearborn to establish the 2022 Healthy Streets Initiative. Any questions or comments on this item from my colleagues?
I do.
Councilwoman Herrick.
Thank you, Council President. I'm wondering if there is anyone from the administration that can kind of give us a summary about beyond what was just described about the Healthy Streets program. I am in full support of the Healthy Dearborn initiative and appreciate that Beaumont has invested as much as they have in ensuring that Dearborn has an opportunity to participate in healthy activities, and we know that Wayne County has some of the poorest health ratings in the country. So these are really important programs, but this is the second year of this project, and I'm just wondering how this compares to what was done last year. We received a survey responses in which there were only 22 participants, if I'm reading this correctly, out of eight streets or however many there were last year. And I know there were challenges last year with getting the equipment, the barrels up, and the pandemic came into play with some of that. So how are things being done differently this year? And as far as the city's responsibility, I understand there's no dollar funding required, but I imagine that there's staff and possibly equipment and storage that's being expected, like of the barrels, I don't know where they were stored. So could you tell us a little bit about it?
Hi, everyone. I'm Ollie Phillips, Community Relations Director. Yeah, so we've been working with the DPW Department to source some of those barrels and some of those...the big blockades, which name I have forgotten. I believe that we should have all of those things on, like on city property, so we'd be able to use them, so there's no cost associated for us. Obviously, there is departmental costs, but it shouldn't...I believe...
Tim Hawkins, DPW Director. Yes, what I think Ms. Phillips is getting to is the fact we do store the barrels on-site. Last year, we went out and set them out, but it's really not much more than us taking the barrels to the locations that they specify, putting them on the ground. Healthy Dearborn is going to move the barrels this year for street sweeping, which was an issue last year we had complaints about. So it's a really good partnership, it's just growing. We went from a little over a dozen barrels last year to now we are over 90. So we're going to be placing them on the side streets and the intersections and things like that that weren't done last year. Some of the concern was that the cross-street traffic was unsure of people riding bikes and parents didn't allow children to use them because of that. Now we're going to have barrels on all the cross-streets on the streets selected, so it's going to be, hopefully, a safer and much more enjoyable event.
Is there any other councilman? Satisfied, Councilman Paris?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I just want to play off of what Councilwoman Herrick said, and just so folks understand, we got a full house here tonight, but a lot of people may not understand that a lot of discussions on these agenda items take place during the Committee of the Whole, the Thursday prior to the council meeting, so there was some discussion on this, and many other items are yet to come. But my question is, Councilwoman Herrick made mention about the Healthy Dearborn and the being or becoming more healthy. I kind of look at this as more of a traffic calming issue. For me, this is only a start of what we plan to do in the future, or hopefully, and I hope we play off of this, to go ahead and slow down vehicles, whether it's pedestrian-friendly, whether it's bicyclists. But just as Mr. Hawkins stated, we did have a problem last year with those barrels out. I mean, it did become very unsightly. We did have complaints, you know, from area residents. I live by a couple of these streets that have had this and did hear some of the complaints. What I'd like to do, though, and it was alluded to, that the survey from last year, not very well-publicized maybe, maybe we can do a little bit more, because we should be getting a lot more input from people. And just speaking to people out in the audience and at home, if this is coming, one of your eight streets, look for it to come. If there is a survey coming out, please, your input is very, very, much so necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments from my colleagues? Thank you both, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any comments from the public regarding this item? If so, please step forward and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Glenn Savarice. I reside at 22214 Hebbey Lane, Dearborn, Michigan, and I support the initiative and thank the council for its consideration and hope you vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. Appreciate that. Any other comments or questions from the public? Okay, hearing and seeing none, unanimous roll will be attached. Next item, please.
Item 14, resolution by Councilmembers Al Sowafi and Paris authorizing the Finance Director to recognize the excess high-in-density drug trafficking areas grant in the amount of $18,084 from the Access Community Health and Research Center for additional patrol money to assist in the excess post-overdose rapid response team and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, the Dearborn Police Department is requesting the council to approve and accept and recognize the excess high-in-density drug trafficking areas grant in the amount of $18,084 from Access Community Health and Research Center. The grant will be used to assist that excess post-overdose rapid response team, which targets citizens that have overdose on narcotics. This team...I'm sorry, this team provides post-information on Narcan kits...I'm sorry, the team does provide these kits and information on them to the residents as well. Any questions or concerns on this item by any of my colleagues? Any from any in the audience? Okay, hearing and seeing none, unanimous roll will be attached. Next item.
Item 15, resolution by Councilmembers Herrick and Burns authorizing the Finance Director to recognize the excess National Association of County and City Officials Post-Overdose Rapid Response Team-related grant in the amount of $76,590 from the Access Community Health and Research Center for additional patrol money to assist in the excess post-overdose rapid response team and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, again, this is a companion piece that Dearborn Police is asking, is requesting approval to accept and recognize the access grant, and the grant is in the amount of $76,590 coming from Access Community Health and Research Center, which will be paid over 18 months and will be used to assist Access Post-Overdose Rapid Response Team, which targets the citizens that have overdose on narcotics, and assist their post-overdose rapid response team. We appreciate the Dearborn Police Department for bringing this forward, and they're working with the grants as well as with Access as well. Any questions or comments on this item from my colleagues? Councilwoman Herrick.
Just a quick thank you to Access for its long partnership in Dearborn, providing opportunities and assisting Dearborn residents, but especially with, as we all know, the challenges that we've had with overdoses and narcotics and the availability and the problems it's caused, not only for the people that have overdosed, but for their families. And Access helps us provide some wraparound services for those families and those impacted. So thank you again to Access for your longtime partnership and working with this grant.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman. Any other comments from my colleagues? Councilman Hamood.
I just had a question for administration. Did this come through the new grant department or is it still through the police department?
It's still through the police department.
Okay, well, we hope to alleviate your burden wherever Chief Shaheen is.
There you go.
There we go. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman Hamood. Any other comments? Councilman Abraham?
If I may, I just wanted to just...
Yes, go ahead, Chief.
Just to Councilwoman Herrick's comment about the challenges that the city has had with the opioid epidemic, I just want to really reaffirm that the...oh, sorry. I just reaffirm that our police chief and the administration is very supportive of initiatives like this and will continue to work on this. We're excited that our health director will be starting fairly soon, and this is something that we will definitely be looking at very closely. So just to reiterate the Councilwoman's sentiments about the support Access has been giving absolutely, and of course, thank you to Chief Shaheen and his team and Chief Murray for the work that they do as well.
All right. Any other comments from my colleagues? Councilman Abraham?
Just my...back to what I was...I appreciate the comments because my question was actually, how do we integrate this with the new health department that we've kind of reinforced this year with the new administration? I think everybody's looking forward to that, and this is, I think, a very good, timely example of how these things all mesh together with the community and having the right representation in the administration. Not that the police force needs a lot of help, but all hands on deck when it comes to community health.
Thank you, Councilman. Any comments from the public? All right, hearing and seeing none, unanimous roll will be attached. Next item.
Item 16, resolution by Councilmembers Hamood and Paris authorizing the Finance Director to increase the part-time accountant role to a full-time position and with allocated charges to the three pension systems, increasing in the amount of $31,200 with no current year appropriation needed and requesting immediate effect.
All right, thank you. Currently, the Finance Department is...Accounting Division has one full-time accountant, two, and one now vacant part-time accounting association...associated with Pension System Works. At the Chapter 22 and 23 Pension Board meetings on February 24th, both boards expressed interest in moving forward...moving the part-time role to a full-time role to assist with strengthening the current structure, improving stability, and an opportunity for backup and succession planning for the future pending agreements with the third...with all three boards sharing the cost. The Finance Director respectfully requests the authority to increase the part-time role to a full-time position. This is in effect will not...I'm sorry, will not pose any budget challenge for this area, but they will be asking for this increase in the 2023 budget coming up soon. Upon approval of having two full-time accountant positions, the Chapter 21 allocation for the charges in the pension system will increase by approximately $1,600 for an estimated $14,377 annually. There's no financial impact to the general fund as costs are associated with our pension system funds. Any questions or comments on this by my colleagues?
I just have one comment.
Councilman Abraham.
And I know that this position will be funded through the pension, but I think it's fair to note that the pensions are funded by general fund dollars ultimately, so any costs and expenses for the pension plan are ultimately funded with general fund dollars.
Okay, any other comments or questions from my colleagues? Any from the public? Okay, unanimous roll will be attached. Next item.
Can I have a motion for a roll call vote?
Oh, you'd like to...oh, I'm sorry, yeah. But you have no comments, you just want a roll call vote on this?
Yeah.
Okay, can we have a roll call vote?
On item 16.
Mr. Clerk?
Yes.
On item 16, yes.
Okay, Councilmember Hamood.
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Paris.
Yes.
Councilmember Al Sowafi.
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick.
Yes.
Councilmember Burns.
Yes.
Council President Serini.
Yes.
Seven yays, the resolution passes.
Okay, next item, please.
Item 17, resolution by Councilmembers Serini and Al Sowafi authorizing the Finance Director to pledge the excess assets of Chapter 21 Pension System to the City of Dearborn Chapter 23 Retirement System and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, the city has a closed and overfunded Chapter 21 Police and Fire Pension System, which is...the system is approximately 396% overfunded with an excess of $18.9 million. I raised this issue myself, so I'm glad the mayor and the administration brought this forward in 2016 to no avail, and wanted to thank the administration for going through this diligent process to find out what actually can be done. The administration requested a supplemental evaluation study to be completed by the city's actuary, Gabriel Roder and Smith, as well as the city's auditor, Plant Moran. The result of this supplemented study indicated that pledging of Chapter 21 pension assets through the system would result in a savings of approximately $1,933,850 for budget year 2023, and will have similar savings each year going forward. The action of pledging excessive assets will not impact the funding status under the GASP or the Public Act 202, nor violate a fiduciary responsibility by this board. Does anyone from my colleagues have a question or comment on this item? Councilman Paris.
Thank you, Council President. I want to start off on this item number 17 by stating, Chapter 21, if people don't understand, is a closed system for police and fire. It was back in the late 1990s where the pension system was actually closed, and since that period of time, we only have about 30 members. We talked about this at great length during our Thursday Committee of the Whole meeting, and for the most part, I did get the answers to questions that I had, or I did get the answers, I apologize, to go ahead and make more of an informed decision on this, but what I'm... Uh, but what I might want to say is for those that don't understand that there's about 30 members that are left for Chapter 21. So after the last beneficiary were to pass in the future, those dollars would revert back to the city general fund. However, now what we're looking at is pledging these funds, which could result in our general fund dollars lessening to go ahead and be contributed, uh, for actual required or actual dis, actually, actuarial distributed contribution, my apologies on that.
That's a tough one. Don't worry.
On a year-to-year basis, uh, would be decreased. Uh, a concern that I have though, and I must express this, is we have an old pension system. Number one, there aren't that many pension systems, uh, that are this old that have been closed for Chapter 21 Police and Fire. We also, uh, have, uh, not just a closed system, but it's overfunded. And when we say 396% overfunded, you want to stay at 100%. So I understand the request to pledge these dollars towards Chapter 23 from Chapter 21 of the $18.9 million. But here's my concern. Uh, we look at ourselves right now financially, how we're doing in the United States and worldwide. Uh, this is a relatively small, uh, plan. There are very, very few, I don't know of any really pension plans that number one are funded at nearly 400%. Just a matter of a few months ago, we got a report that we were 424% funded. Now we're, uh, under 400% and it took a number of years to be able to be overfunded. But the city council, we do not, because we are the fiduciary, I'm sorry, for Chapter 21, we have that responsibility. We are not contributing anything to Chapter 21 because it's so overfunded. But here's a concern is because it's so overfunded and so few members, that we have a concern with what may happen in the future financially. What's going to happen, we will have to, if, this is revocable, that we can go back on it or future councils can go back on it. But if they do, they will have to repay that money and they may be substantially more in the future than what they would be now. So I have a concern with that. I also have a concern that number one, moving forward as a city council on this issue, if in fact, that we have not talked to our pension boards for Chapter 23, which would be somewhat of the beneficiary out of this because their pension fund is going to be, uh, contributed to more. They're going to benefit from this, but we haven't notified anybody about it. They haven't discussed it. The pension board doesn't know anything about this other than what we're discussing and bringing up to the point right now. And of course, our members, even though there's only 30 left, what does Chapter 21 retirees think? They are in the, the later stages of their lives. They're going to be concerned. If they're not hearing about it and we don't discuss this first, uh, I know we do have an offer and support on that, but because of these concerns, I would only like to reach out to my colleagues that I would still like to have a discussion on this, whether it be a, uh, study session and we would invite the pension board members or any concerned citizens, let alone those that are beneficiaries of Chapter 21. I know we have an offer and support, but I would still, I'd like to entertain that, uh, we would have a study session on this before making definitive, uh, answers on this.
Okay. I know Councilwoman Herrick has, but I'd like to just follow up on that real quick. First of all, I just want to make sure everybody understands because it's, it's not moving money, as you indicated. It's pledging money that's there. So, and let's just be honest, I want people to be honest. I'm very proud that our employees have an ability to say that their fund is overfunded by 396%. I'm sure the state would love that as well. So let, let's just be honest, we had some people here from our neighbor city council people here a few months ago that they have zero dollars saved for this. So to turn around and say that 396 and we, if we only fund 100%, that it's not a good use to, to allocate this money over to the other fund, I think is short sighted. It's our responsibility. And to wait for the pension, uh, the last person to be out of there to move the money would eliminate $1.9 million. I think people have to understand, the residents went to the ballot box, elected a new mayor, elected a new council and voted down a millage that I haven't seen voted down since I've been years. They don't want to pay more and more taxes and we have, we are charged to find ways to save money. And to say that 18.9 million, by the way, that means there's still 6.8 million in the fund, which is according to the actuaries, 100% funded. All we're doing is saying that this money will be used in the future for that fund, which will turn around and save us $1.9 million. Now, we had some retirees out here in the past that asked me, how are you going to save money? There's no way you can save money. How are you going to do that? We've had people in the, during the campaign say, if you cut taxes, you have to cut services. Well, I want to tell the residents out there that the budget hearings are starting soon and we will find a way to get our house in order and to be fiscally responsible, but it starts with initiatives like this. To leave $25.8 million in a fund with three, with 30 people in it, which is 396% overfunded. When I made this request in 2016, Councilman, it was 240% and everybody clapped except me. Cause I said to the actuaries, what you guys did is gave us an estimate that wasn't worth the paper you wrote it on. Because what happened is, the councilman indicated, is we have to put in general fund dollars to get there. So we put in more money that we needed that we didn't need, right? And then we couldn't fix our roads and deal with infrastructure and sewer and, and all the other stuff that we do because we were putting it in the pension fund that didn't need to be in there. And I'd like to know how many in the state, I would challenge that there isn't one in the state that's overfunded by 396%. So I think you're more than, I, I don't see a reason to have a study session on this and if somebody wants to vote no on it, they can. But when you come to budget and want to know, how can you save money? And you're allocating money that's there, not taking it out, is not being removed, it's being pledged and it's done. It's been done because we have our Plant Moran auditors indicating that it's viable, it's been done in the past and it's going to save $1.9 million for the taxpayers that we need to use in other areas. So I've been very vocal about this since 2016 and I'm glad that the legal opinion and the mayor went through and went all the way through the research to see that it's eligible or not. But talking to the pension board, we're responsible to fund our budget and this is a proper way to save $1.9 million. So that's my take on it and, uh, unless we have any other comments, I know Councilwoman Herrick has a comment. We'll move forward and go from there. Councilwoman Herrick?
Um, thank you, Council President. Thank you, Councilwoman Paris, for your comments. Um, Councilwoman Paris outlined some of my concerns as well. Uh, pledging the funds is not a guarantee that those funds will stay, um, pledged to Chapter 2021 going forward. I know that this is a concern to some of our retirees in, uh, chapter, in, in the other pension funds, the 25, um, I'm sorry, 22 and 23. And this is why I would have liked to have had a study session where we could talk to our representatives on the pension boards, as well as have representatives from the different retiree groups in the room at that time to discuss it, as well as possible, other possibilities for how this, uh, these funds, the access funds could be used to bring, to possibly close the, um, Chapter 2021 earlier. I don't know if that's even a possibility, but is, is that something that we could do? Is, um, perhaps there are so few remaining participants in Chapter 2021, could we do a lump sum payout to the participants if that's an option that they would like to pursue? I guess that's a question right now that I have-
Well, Jeremy, yeah, our, our corporation council is more than capable to answer that. He sits on them.
Yeah, we explored that option back in 2016. The problem was you have to get everybody to participate in the system. So that was the hangup. We've explored this, um, through the earmarking, the consolidation, the pledging, the insurance policy that they all buy into. And the pledging is, uh, where it fell. We didn't, we didn't get much of a response on, uh, purchasing insurance, to have everybody buy out the plan. Plus you have charter language that has the three separate systems. So at that time in 2016, I'm still of that opinion, you still have a language issue with the charter, if you dissolve that system. So there's some nuances there, so we believe the best position for it was the pledge. And you have, I believe, the two legal opinions from 16 that I wrote, uh, related to earmarking consolidating, which I, I said was not permissible.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Herrick, then to answer your question, anyone from my colleagues like to have any other comments on it? Okay. Anyone from the public that like to speak on this item? Go ahead. Please step forward, state your name and address for the record and you have a three-minute limit, just a reminder.
Yes, hi, excuse me. Good evening, Council. Uh, my name's Eric Cullum. I'm a retiree under Chapter 23 Pension System. Unfortunately, a lot of what I may say to the general audience out here may not make sense, but I know this, the council will understand everything I'm saying. You've had the committee of the whole meeting, you beat this to death, I understand. But so much of what Ken said and Councilwoman, woman Herrick, Councilwoman Burns is true. There was no input from any of the chapters and you're directly affecting the chapters. Two of the letters that came from the legal department prior were saying basically, this couldn't or shouldn't be done, although let's go back to the word pledge, as was said before. Pledging is just that, we pledge allegiance to the flag when we started, but tomorrow I could change my mind. That's exactly what this is. You could change your pledge or heaven forbid, four years from now, many of you members may be gone. The new council may decide, hey, we got a lot of money over here. We don't need to give it to that pension, we'll just take it. Now what happens four years down the road? You haven't been putting any money in to Chapter 23. You've just pledged it. So four years down the road, the new council says, we're not going to pledge it anymore. Where is that possibly 10 to 12 million dollars going to come from?
Okay, Ms., yeah, you can, but let's just make sure, if you don't mind, I want to make it an answer so that we're-
As long as I get to continue.
You're going to get your time, 100%. We don't, we will do that. But I did, no, you're 100% right. I just want to make sure what you said, I understood if it was accurate. Mr. Romer? He, he's indicating that Chapter 23 is no longer getting any money funded by the city. Is that correct?
No, that's not what I said, Councilman.
Okay, I pause. What did you say?
That's okay. But along those lines, the city has not contributed to Chapter 21 Pension for, prior to 2005.
No, we know that. That's because it was closed. I'm talking about 23.
Nope.
So 23 years, you didn't say that we're not, we're not paying, because we're paying-
No, 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 you're still doing ADC for 23. I did not say that.
Okay, do you know how much that is?
This year?
Yeah, Mr. Romer, do you know how much we're contributing to 23 at this year? Or is Mr. Kennedy here? I just want to make sure we're all talking about the same money.
Certainly.
I, I don't know that figure off the top of my head. All right, let's get Mr. Kennedy here.
Roughly 1.9 million for, has contributed for 22.
Let's, let's make sure. I just want to make sure we're on the same page.
Sure.
Yeah.
Good evening, Council President, Council. Michael Kennedy, Finance Director. I do not have the exact number that we have contributed to Chapter 23 for the fiscal year 22, but it's around 13, 14 million dollars.
That's, that's why I wanted to bring that up because I know it wasn't a one or two million. So, I know, but I want everybody to understand it. We're putting in 13 to 14 million dollars now into Chapter 23. Is that correct, Mr. Kennedy?
Correct.
Okay. And this is going to help us put in 1.9 million less. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Kennedy. I just want to make sure we're on the same page. Cause some people think that we're not putting no money in the, in there.
Right. And I do apologize if I, if the general audience doesn't understand and I, I missed that.
No, no, you're, you're fine. Go ahead.
I understand the millage proposal did not pass. That's going to hurt. It's a big budget issue. But on the other hand, $47 million is coming to the city from the federal government. Now I know that if I understand it correctly, I'm not on the council, it's going to be broken up into two parts. Also, if I understand it correctly, the state is going to be giving a 10% increase in revenue sharing. 5% ongoing and a one-time 5% increase. And finally, the state is also considering additional funds for pensions throughout the state, but that comes with a caveat, that in order to qualify for the grant, the city would have to have made the required ADC. If we don't make the ADC, do we not, are we not part of now this grant possibility? And I understand the state's already said that those systems that are more dire straits are going to get more of the money. But we could fall along that line somewhere, but if we don't make the ADC, are we now out of this grant possibility, which would be less money? I would ask that the council consider tabling this motion and possibly bring it up in two years from now, to give everyone concerned a more stable look at this proposal. As things set now, with the interest rate at the 7.9%, it's the highest it's been in more than 20 years. They raised the, uh, interest rate a quarter point. We have a war in Ukraine. We have supply issues and of course COVID, the never-ending COVID. All these things could be affecting what's going on in our pension system and the funds.
I'm sorry, your time has expired.
No, you're, yeah, you're fine. You can finish. You're done, right?
Okay, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
I would ask again that you consider tabling this to let us do more understanding and more look into this system. And some of the issues and questions may go to the state and come from the state. I know this is a pledge and it's a difference than earmarking and, and giving because it can't, you can't take money from 21 and give money to 23.
That's correct. So, Mr. Cullum, just so we can clarify a few things, you mentioned the ARPA funds. Are you alluding that those are being used for? What was the purpose of you?
My understanding, you can't use those funds.
Well, that's my understanding too. So I'm just wondering why you mentioned that we're getting 47 million dollars from our funds when they can't be used for pension?
I mention it because it still would be going to the city budget. And I understand that conceivably, and I know this number keeps going back and forth, Councilman yourself, is anywhere between 13 and 15 million per year without the millage proposal, am I right?
You mean the, the voter, the voter rejecting the, the renewal of the millage?
Right. But that, that's going to hit the city budget by anywhere between 13 and 15 million, is that correct?
Yeah, no, I think that's an accurate number.
Okay.
Between 13 and 15 million. But we also can't use the 47 million from ARPA funds to supplement our budget.
You can, as I'm saying, and again, I'm not on the council.
And I understand, but I don't want to give misinformation, so.
Right.
The statement about ARPA funds has nothing to do with this. We're talking about taking a 400, 396% overfunded, uh, uh, fund and pledging the remainder, leaving 100% pledging the remainder to the other side. But I'd like, Mr. Kennedy, do you have something to follow up on that?
Yes, I have a few points I'd like to clarify.
Thank you.
Based on what I heard. Number one, you mentioned fuel, you mentioned CPI, you mentioned a war. You're mentioning things that are increasing costs, but you're not bringing any solutions on how we balance the budget. Number two, you mentioned that if we did this pledging, we wouldn't meet our ADC. That's an untrue statement. There's an annual evaluation from the actuary that tells you what the ADC is. With the pledge, that ADC is 1.9 millions less. So we are meeting what the ADC is required. You also mentioned a 10% sales tax one time and ongoing. That has not been finalized in the budget, it was proposed. So I don't think we should count those dollars before they come home. The state government's still going back and forth about that. That would be roughly $1 million, so we can put that in perspective. And then the last point I just wanted to bring up. The council is the fiduciary agent for Chapter 21. That's why this item was brought, brought to you, because you're pledging the assets, excess assets of that chapter, which you're the fiduciary responsibility of. So.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments by my colleagues? Councilman Abraham?
Yeah, I'm just stumbling through the ARPA discussion. If, if the ARPA funds were not being considered, why are they part of the backup? The five different scenarios?
Councilman?
So if I may speak to that-
Yeah, well, the mayor, okay, Mayor, if you're-
Yeah, forgive me, I had a meeting with the governor. Um, so if I may speak to that, um, there's a few situations. So that backup item is actually not pertinent to the agenda item before you. Um, there is a bill before the House that was introduced by the appropriations chair, Thomas Albert. And what it does is appropriate over $1 billion to help us pay down some of our unfunded liabilities. And what it does is appropriate over $1 billion to help us pay down some of our unfunded liabilities. And so we're working with the actuaries to see what an infusion of money do to decreasing our annual debt obligation payments from a GF standpoint. So we had the actuaries run some high-level numbers on, well, what would $10 million do for us in terms of our annual obligation payment? Or would 20 million, 30 million, 40 million? But that's not pertinent to the item before you.
It's included in the backup.
It's included mistakenly.
Yeah, Mayor, if I might just say something. Councilman, you weren't here at the committee of the whole. I know you're out of town. But that was brought up by, I think, Councilman Paris, and he had indicated that was, he was looking at, the mayor and administration were looking at exploitative aspect at that time.
So, okay, let me just finish up then, if I could.
Yes, of course, of course.
I do believe that maybe not right this moment, but there's going to be an appropriate time to, as the fiduciaries of Chapter 21, we sit here not as the council, but as the fiduciary board for Chapter 21, that there could be a right opportunity for this. Right now, my concern is that what the state is proposing loosely is helping communities, municipalities, fund their pension liabilities. And if we pledge these assets, we're actually decreasing the pension liability calculation, correct? That's what we're all talking about, decreasing the pension liability. I, for one, would prefer to wait to see what the state comes up with for a formula for providing grant funding to Pension 22 and 23, or Chapter 22 and 23, prior to doing this, because I would sure not like to lose the opportunity to get grant funding and then pledge this later to supplement that. So that's my concern is timing, number one. And number two, at least for me, I can only speak for me as one member of this body, I sure would like to see how this affects the total budget before pledging this, because I don't want to get into a situation where we're pledging a number and then we're maybe backing off that number because we get better information. I don't see the immediate urgency to do this right now. I know the mayor and his staff are working to put a budget together, but I have no problems getting a proposed budget from the administration that includes this and gives us time at that point to digest the entire budget and see the impact, and then resolve this pledge at that point in time.
All right, Council, yeah, just one second. Councilman Hamud, just one second. Mr. Kennedy, do you have the funding levels of Chapter 23 by any chance?
Not with me, no.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, but I know, because we bonded and stuff, I know that we're, the state has a minimum requirement. We've met all the requirements. So I'm not so sure we would get any funding, because we're not in dire straits. I know it was the healthcare, but we're also funded properly in this as well, but they don't have the number.
We're not funded properly here.
Okay. So do we have the number of Chapter 23, what the funding level is at this time?
It's about 70%.
It's roughly 80%.
80%. So I could safely say for myself that I don't think we're going to get funding for 80% funding, because as I indicated, we had two colleagues in here from a neighboring city that has $0. So I just want to make sure we keep that. There is a concern. Your questions are valid. But if we're at 80% funding, I want to make sure the residents know that. Councilman Hamud, if you can.
Yeah, I'd like to motion to suspend the rules.
But we have to complete this.
No, we don't. No, we really don't.
Yes, we do. We have an offer of support.
No, but we can, I mean.
We can motion suspend the rules at any time.
We can. That's true, but we're in the middle of the discussion. If there's any other comments, we can.
We have a speaker on the item.
Right, I know, I know. I'm fully aware. Let's just finish this comments. Mr. Cullum, I appreciate your comments. Mr. Kennedy, thanks for being up here. Is there anyone else from my colleagues who'd like to speak?
I'd like to hear the mayor's response to that.
To which one?
To my question about the proposed grant funding.
So what I would say is, if you want to sit and wait for the legislature to act, that would be a very bad decision, because it's a proposal, and it's not guaranteed to move at this time, especially knowing they're going on a spring break in the next week, and then you have a large summer recess because of 22 election season, plus they're off in the fall because of the 22 election season. And so I think that's that. Secondly, it was provided before you from the actuary about what the financial impact would be, roughly $1.8 million savings in GF. So that number is before you. And as it pertains to how it fits in the overall budget, the council should be very well aware that in November, the residents voted down a supplemental operating Milich. So you know offhand that you have a $16 million shortfall that you're going to have to address. And so seeing how it fits in the overall budget versus trying to assume some of the savings immediately, I don't think is a wise thing to do. If you can capture two or three months' worth of savings before even the budget is passed, why would we not take advantage or take that opportunity to do so? As it was stated earlier, this is a pledging of the excess. And so in this strange world where people believe we might lose 300% of gain, which I don't know how that would happen, it teeters, right? If we go to 350% funded, we're only pledging 250%. If it goes to 450% funded, you're only pledging the excess at all times, and it's pledging on paper. At no point are we actually physically removing dollars and inserting them into the other pensions. Additionally, we got modifications to the legislation that was introduced, where, one, it does fund pensions that are above 60% funded. You can still capture 5%. But they also modified it for us to hopefully capture dollars for our OPEB, which is not as funded as other assets. So I think this is a wise move to make financially, knowing that we're looking at solutions that don't impact services and can sustain this level of services that we do offer. And so for all those reasons, I highly support this item. And we've thought about it and spoken with our actuaries, as well as with Plant Moran, to check all of our boxes.
Council President, can I follow up one more question?
Absolutely, Councilman Abraham.
So are we, is the resolution to pledge excess assets or to pledge 18.9 million?
Excess assets only.
Which is 18.9 million.
The mayor indicated.
That could change, right?
Correct. It changes every year.
Changes every day.
Every day. Correct. And every year, we do the same evaluation from the actuary for each chapter of pension, and that's our art that we work with.
So what's before us is just pledging the actuarial excess calculation. We're not pledging a specific dollar amount?
Yes, sir. Excessive. It floats with wherever you're at.
I guess I missed that in here, because we keep flipping around a lot of 18.9 million dollar pledge, but we're actually not pledging a specific amount. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate it.
Sure.
Okay, any other questions or comments for my colleagues? Okay. If there's anything from the public, we might have to suspend the rules. But are you done, Mr. Cullum?
I just wanted to say thank you for your time and most of all, for your commitment to this community.
All right, thank you. All right, is there any objections to unanimous rule on this item?
Council President, I'd like to have a roll call vote on this.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
No, there was, they didn't come up.
Okay, roll call vote on item number 17. We'll start with Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Paris?
Yes.
Councilmember Al Sowafi?
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Council President Sarini?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamud?
Yes.
Seven yeas, the resolution passes.
All right, thank you. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to suspend the rules of order.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Hamud, and supported by Councilman Burns. So, Mr. Clerk, we're going to be moving ahead. We have a speaker tonight. We're going to be moving ahead item, I believe, number 30. There was a walk-on item, number 33? Oh, no, I'm sorry. Is it, is it 34? Item 34. Do you have that, Clerk? Mr. Clerk, if you can. If you'd like to read that into the record, and then we could, we do need an offer and support on this, and then we do have a speaker for this as well waiting.
Okay. Item number 34, resolution by Councilmember Hamud, in need of support, requesting the clerk to provide equitable language access and operations and communications related to city elections and timely translation for all election materials completed for the August 2022 primary election, and requesting immediate effect.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. We do have a support by Councilman Burns, and we do have a speaker here, if they'd like to come up and speak.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Jake Rallo. I'm Chief External Affairs Officer for the Michigan Department of State and here on behalf of Secretary of State Jocelyn Benson. She was here. She actually wanted to address you in person. Unfortunately, she has another engagement tonight, and so she did have to go. I'm very sorry about that, so I'm just going to share some sentiments on her behalf.
Well, you're okay. You represented her. We'll be fine. I did see her in the audience. I apologize, but we had a contentious pension debate that ended up 7-0 vote. So we want to make sure that we got you on here. So I appreciate that.
Those 7-0 votes are often the most difficult ones.
That's right.
No, it's, she's a more dynamic speaker. That's the only reason I'm really apologizing.
All right, all right.
So on her behalf, I just wanted to say she knows that you all are considering a resolution this evening about translating election materials and ballots. And she really wanted to commend you all for considering this resolution and to ask you to pass the resolution. Translated materials and ballots have been found to increase voter engagement. And I think we all can agree, no matter our political perspective, that increasing voter engagement leads to a more representative government, and in fact, more effective government because of that better representation. It leads to elected officials who better understand the needs of their constituents, and it enables those constituents to better hold their officials accountable. In fact, really, there may be nothing more American than the promise of one person, one vote. And so by enabling citizens to be both free individuals while participating in the great compact of our collective government, that is our nation's democracy, the more we can do to bring voters into our government, bring them into voter engagement, the better off we are. And yet, the truth is, as our nation diversifies, it takes more to ensure that every citizen has equal and equitable access to the ballot. This is why at the Michigan Department of State, we've launched a Language Access Task Force early in the secretary's administration. We continue to translate documents. We've translated dozens and dozens of documents. We also have self-service stations that are now available in eight different languages. And we work with community partners across the state to make sure that our election materials are translated, to make sure that everybody knows their rights and how to access and exercise those rights, and to make sure that they can learn that information in their native tongue. It's also why the Federal Election Assistance Commission has noted that accurate and timely translation of voting materials is crucial to assisting language communities. And here in Dearborn, where 52% of residents speak a language other than English at home, the secretary really just wanted to commend you for taking leadership on this issue. You have a tremendous opportunity to demonstrate that you are, in fact, leaders on this issue, and that you want to act with integrity, act in solidarity with so many of your residents, and to truly build a more democratic city, which in turn benefits the city itself, our state, and our nation. That's all I've got for you.
I think you did a great job.
Did my best.
Thank you very much, and we appreciate. And we appreciate the secretary being here. I apologize we were unable to get to her. But I'd like to have, since Councilman Hamud was the driving factor on this and worked with our legal department for quite some time with many drafts and emails. So, Councilman Hamud, I appreciate the hard work. If you'd like to take over from here and give us some more information on it.
Yeah, so actually, I wish Secretary Benson was here today, because on a personal note, the first time I learned about translated ballots was actually part of a conversation then Ms. Benson had between her and my father back in the early 2000s. So my father, at the time, had successfully prosecuted people for voter intimidation in Amtramic, which at the time had many elections-related issues. Eventually, that prompted a federal investigation, which eventually led to the advent of translated ballots that we know that they have today. So I want to thank her for having been here today, and on behalf of her work, you know, we really appreciate it. I know for all people who have worked on elections for quite a while, it's very important, and I appreciate that the Department of State takes these kinds of issues very seriously. We all know voting is one of the most important rights we have as American citizens. Providing greater access to people builds additional trust, engagement, and integration of residents into our democracy. I know that in some past elections, we have provided translated sample ballots, thanks to the work of the clerk, which was a good first step. This resolution will take us a step further by mandating the translation of the actual ballot used by the voter and other related materials if and when needed. We aim to create a safe, accessible, and secure democratic voting process in the city of Dearborn to guarantee the integrity of our election and to ensure the voter's intent is heard at the ballot box. It's my hope that the City Council of Dearborn will entertain and pass this resolution on the road to a more transparent, responsive, and modern city.
Thank you, Councilman Hamud. Any other comments about my colleagues? Councilwoman Burns?
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Councilman Hamud, for your work on this. I know this is an issue that we're both very passionate about, so very happy to see this item come forward. You know, I think accessibility and inclusion are key in life in general, specifically where voting is concerned. I think every person, every voter, has the right to read a ballot in a language that they are most comfortable and most familiar with and feel most confident with. That is critical. We're blessed to have a diverse community here in Dearborn. And again, every resident, when they go to vote, should see the process of voting as a reflection of who they are. And I think that this is a really important step in that process. It's a greater step towards equity and inclusion and recognizing our community, and I think that's critical. So I'm very happy to see this come forward. I look forward to working with our clerk and seeing the good work that they will do, again, to ensure greater access and greater equity through the ballot and through the voting process, which is such an integral part of how we live here in this country and how we participate and have our voices heard when it comes to electing our representatives at all levels of government. So very happy to see this come forward.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Councilman Paris?
Thank you, Council President. What I wanted to start off and say is, I do totally understand at least 90% of this, the reason why we're looking to have this translation. I really am. Just like the prior item that we were talking to, though, let's go back in time just a few weeks before the city clerk had a, was bringing forward, looking at our precincts and reducing them from 48 down to 43 or 44 precincts. We, as a council, made a decision that that was not going to be the case until we got public input, until we found out what the residents felt about some of the changes that were coming forward from what was proposed by our city clerk. We felt, as a city council, that we were being rushed and that we needed more time, but more importantly, we wanted public input. I'm going to just go forward on this by saying that here is something that is a walk-on item to the city council that the vast majority of the paperwork that I have before me, I've had just a few hours to take a look at. I don't know all the issues involved. We have talked about some of it. I do commend our councilmen for bringing this forward. I do understand it. I do understand the reason for translation of the ballots. I'd like to see that happen. However, I still don't think that we need to rush. The reason for rushing on this is a possibility for, from what I'm understanding, is because of the August ballot and getting things in place before the August ballot. But bringing this forward now at the last moment is the same thing that we did the prior item that we were talking about, which I'm going to tell you, I voted yes for. But I wanted to reiterate what some of the challenges are of doing things like this. You miss things. You miss things. You misinform people, or people are misinformed or felt they're misinformed because they're not getting the adequate information. And seen by the large audience that we have here tonight, this is an important issue. I get it. And I want to go forward with something like this, but I want to be informed, not me just personally. I want our audience. I want our population here in Dearborn to be informed what we're doing and why we're doing it. One other thing that I wanted to bring up is the cost. At the very last thing that is in this resolution is the clerk shall receive necessary appropriation as determined by the council to provide equitable language access for all election-related materials from the city general fund. That's where the money comes from. Does anybody in the audience know how much this is going to cost us? If anybody has an idea right off the top of their head, maybe they might be able to come up and speak and educate me as a councilperson, because I certainly don't know. And that would go, then, could this be $20,000? Could it be $50,000? Do we know everything that's entailed about making materials and copying materials and disseminating materials, notifying the public of what the changes might be and where the available resources are? And I would even defer to our city clerk. Does the city clerk have any kind of an idea? I believe that the city clerk is probably in the same boat that I am right now. I'm seeing this for the first time just a couple hours ago. And yet, I'm here as a walk-on for me to vote in the affirmative or the negative about this, and I'm not prepared to do that. And I would ask our city clerk if he would have any kind of an idea, just in generalities, looking at something like this, what kind of a cost it would be.
Yeah, hang on. I'm going to respond first, but he has a question for the clerk. But I just want to make sure we clarify, Councilman Paris. I appreciate your candor and your comments. But I wanted to make it clear, first, I wanted to make sure that the secretary, Mrs. Benson, that our residents know that she was here herself, and she came in during a conversation that we could not break to have her come in, and she had to leave. But I do thank her in her office for coming forward. But I do think this is distinguishable from what the clerk brought forward, because I want to make sure we don't get misinformed. I know you like proper information. What the clerk was proposing was closing a polling location.
Multiple.
Right. Multiple, which we had to find out which ones they were. If you remember, you were at the meeting. I had to ask, because it wasn't in the writing, and I stopped, and we went and had a meeting. So I want to make sure it's clarified. But this agenda item is saying, you're going to go to your ballot box, and on your document, it's going to have two different languages, so that you can.
No, there would be a choice.
Okay, well, there'll be a choice of ballots. I'm sorry, correct. So there'll be a choice of one ballot in one language, one ballot in English. That is distinguishable from going to vote and your polling location is closed. That's a big difference. We asked for mapping in how the polls were going to be handled, where they were going to be at. I think this is distinguishable. I respect your opinion, but I think that's, I want our residents to understand. When you're taking a high school that never had anyone and then having 5,000 people there all of a sudden, and half, and all those people moving, that's a question that's very concerning. And that's why we asked for a study session, and we asked for input, because it was going to change where they went. It was changing a location and consolidating significant locations. On this particular item, what we're doing is making access, as the Secretary of State asked, and as well as her representative that was here indicated. So I want to make sure our residents understand, that's distinguishable from going to vote at a place you've been voting for 20 years and it's closed. So I think that's a difference, and that was our concern, at least it was for mine, and you voted to the affirmative as well. So I, you know, I know we have to go forward, but did you want to respond, Councilman Paris?
Yes, if I could, I'm just bringing that up as an example, what the clerk brought forward, that was an issue that we needed to look at as a council and make a decision going forward. Now, we're getting very quickly another resolution brought before us that is quickly, it's quickly brought before us. I'm not ready to make a decision.
Okay.
And, you know, and I'm not, and I'd still like to see.
I understand, we're going to get, we're going to get to your answer, but you are under, you do understand that you have to vote either yes or no on this?
I understand that.
If it goes, if it goes to vote, okay.
Yes.
So, Mr. Clerk, the councilman had a question for you. Did you have, do you understand it? Would you like him to repeat it?
I think the question was, do I know what it's going to cost?
Correct.
Basically what the question is?
Yes.
And since I, like you, received this just a few hours ago myself, obviously I had no opportunity to consult with, with most of the vendors that we have to deal with as far as printing. I did have an opportunity to, though, to talk to Dominion briefly, who told me that on the low end, from their point of view, they were looking at about $10,000, and that's if we translate it in one dialect, because if we changed the ballot to Arabic, as she explained to me, then the voting, we have what's called a VAT, which is a voter assistant terminal for those that are impaired hearing or vision, and those all have listeners on it. You have to listen to hear the ballot in whatever language that you want it in, and so we would have to determine which dialect what we would want on that VAT machine. It could be in a Lebanese dialect, or Assyrian dialect, or Yemeni dialect, whatever the dialect is, it's an additional $4,700 for every dialect that we add onto that. So it's an extra $8,700 roughly on the low end from Dominion, plus another $4,700 per dialect. And she also told me that they needed to consult with us before I could make that decision or the council could make that decision, and the Wayne County clerk also has to be consulted on things like this. Dominion is familiar with Hamtramck because they've done the ballots in Hamtramck for a number of years, and she told me there, it's bigger than the numbers, it's a lot of procedural things that have to be done and thought of, not just a few things on a colored piece of paper here that I received a couple minutes ago that shows the timeframe when we can put this together. It's actually doing it and doing it the proper way, and obviously, we'd have to work with Dominion because they're the ones that provide our voting systems. Also, speaking, just, and I hope our reaction to this would be a lot better in Dearborn than in Hamtramck. We keep bringing up Hamtramck as a good example, but it's not really a good example, because I was told by Dominion and by Wayne County Elections Division that in the past seven years, one person has taken advantage of using that Bengali dialect in voting. One person in seven years has used it. So I'm hoping that when this happens in Dearborn, that we get a lot more than that. I think we will, but just as a reference, both Dominion and Wayne County has pointed that out to me.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Paris, did I answer some of your questions?
Yes, for now, yes, thank you.
Okay. So anyone else from the, my colleagues that like to speak on this topic? Councilman Alswaf?
Thank you, Council President. First of all, I'd like to commend Councilman Hamud, and I'll be proud to support this resolution. Speaking on the dialects, I know you mentioned like several different dialects, it could be in one, modern standard Arabic, MSA.
Yes, we could do that, yes.
And that'll be, that'll be good enough, they're not watching a movie, so it'll be okay, just to be in that dialect. And then we talked about, you know, rushing through or taking a pause earlier. Well, you know, when we're taking away something from residents, yeah, we need to take a pause, and that's what we were doing earlier, we were shutting down polling locations. That does require a pause. What we're doing here today is adding to, which is fine, we can rush that. And this is not just about voter access, this is about civic engagement, about being a part of your own community. My parents didn't start voting till I started voting, and while, while the process might seem like a second nature to some, it could be intimidating to others. I think this is a step in the right direction, and our democracy only gets better when we're all involved in it.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman Alswaf. Councilman Hamud?
Yes, so first, I would like to point out, I did engage as many council members as were in town prior to sending the language, and I did send out the language as much as I could over the weekend. It did evolve a little bit, and actually, as it evolved over the weekend, I narrowed the scope specifically because of concerns over cost. Now, when I first proposed this, I broadened the scope to all election-related materials. Why? Because I do believe all election-related materials, and I believe all communications from the city of Dearborn to residents should be available in whatever language we have of the critical mass of residents I actually wrote into the resolution. So to, I just want to be specific. This is language access, by the way, the word Arabic is never mentioned in this, so I'd like to point out, this is equitable for any language. Language access for election materials shall be provided in the English language and any language that is the language spoken at home by a minimum of 10,000 or 5% of the city's residents, whichever criterion is met first, as reported by the most recent American Community Survey. The American Community Survey is a subsection that is ran by the U.S. Census, so we have accurate data on that, which was part of the data I sent to all council prior, and then I sent them an additional data table once I had it with me. And I also created, because I'm in project management, I created a diagram of exactly the timing and why we needed to implement this as soon as possible. Now, the reason that I use this language, about 5% or 10,000, was because in the VRA, they actually have something called a language minority group. 52 U.S. Code 10-3-1-0, you know, it's very narrowly defined, only American Indian, Asian American, Alaskan natives, or people of Spanish heritage are covered under that. The point of this resolution is simply to bring the city of Dearborn into what I believe is a better implementation of the Voting Rights Act that is more broadly implemented to any language that people are speaking in the city at home. So, and in regards to the cost, I would just ask, you know, how much is too much to spend on democracy? You know? How much is too much? Because I'm hearing numbers like 10,000, 15,000. I'd be happy to spend $100,000 a year on democracy. We have, what, $100 million budget, Council President, something like that?
140, 170, in that range, yeah.
Yeah. You know, I think in $100 million worth of tax money that's given to this city, I think we can spare a little bit of money extra to make sure that everybody feels that they have a stock in our democracy. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Any other comments from my colleagues?
If I may, Council President?
Yeah, Mayor, one second. Councilman Abraham, did you?
Go ahead for the mayor.
Okay, Mayor, go.
I'll defer to the mayor.
Thank you so much. You know, one, just wanted to recognize that Councilman Hamud has been championing this, and the issue of translated ballots is not a new issue, it's an issue that we've been discussing for decades. And frankly, what was frightening was some of the commentary that was spoken to in previous council meetings about why there should not be translated ballots, and I found that very undemocratic. As the administration, we're committed to fully fund the translation of ballots. We can find the funding within our budget, be it 20,000 or be it 100,000. I am certain that we can find it within our budget to allocate to the clerk's office to make sure that these materials are available. Secondly, I would also, you know, just throw out there that we also have many nonprofits within the city who I think would be more than happy to work with us to get a discounted rate to help translate materials to ensure that we can improve or increase the number of individuals who participate in our elections. And so I think from that perspective, I just wanted the public to be aware and the council to be aware that the administration is fully supportive behind this resolution and that we are willing to fully fund this effort as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Abraham?
Thank you, Council President, and I appreciate Councilman Hamud's effort on this, and it's commendable bringing this forward. My only concern is the timing, not of voting on it, but the implementation. We have a timeline, I don't know who prepared this, I don't believe it was the clerk's office, doesn't say where this came from. Is this from our office?
We don't have a color printer, I don't know who printed that.
I don't know, so we have backup that no one knows where it came from.
It was printed by our office, I'd be happy to answer that.
All right, I was trying to make sure.
So, it's true, I don't know where this came from.
That's right.
So, I mean, what's in front of us is a resolution, and actually, within the resolution, there are six separate statements to be resolved. The first three have to do with language and accessibility, which I fully support. Number four has to do with the implementation timeline, which is prior to the August primary election this year. I, I'm a bit concerned about meeting that deadline, and I spoke to the councilman on that, he's fully, fully aware of that. My preference would be to implement this and no later than the 2023 year, to give the clerk's office time to transition to it, or sooner if possible, but I, but I struggle with forcing this on the clerk's office. We have four elections this year, one still left in May, and then August and November, and trying to push this forward, although I, I hope we can do it, I'm very much concerned about the ability and the resources to do that. And I'll just leave that for the rest of the discussion. Council President, I want to come back to this, because if this comes to a vote, I'm going to ask, according to our Rules of Order 8.3, that the resolution be divided and that the timeline be voted on separately.
Okay, Councilman, we will reach that when we get there. Councilwoman Herrick?
Thank you. I appreciate Councilman Hamud for taking this on and working with the state of Michigan to ensure that the language here is, meets the state's criteria, because this is such an important issue, we don't want to mess it up going forward. Voter accessibility is extremely important, and I didn't know why we hadn't done this sooner, so I appreciate that we've done this, but concerning timing, I just, and I'm fully in support of this measure, so thank you. I just want, I just want to talk about how it came to us, again, because this came to us today, and in order for us to do our due diligence on any matter, especially one that is so critically important to everybody here in Dearborn, we cannot let this be a precedent in how we do business as a city council. This is the city's business meeting, the council meeting is the city's business meeting, and working with the administration and the mayor. And in order to make sure that, as Councilman Paris said, you know, that there aren't any mistakes made, that, that we've done our due diligence and we've looked at things from every angle, and the cost is a very important thing to look at, of course, we need, we need to be better prepared, and that's why our council had a study session just three weeks ago, where it was, we had on a whiteboard a timeline of when items are going to come from the administration or from the clerk, and be compiled and brought to council for deliberation. It was a very detailed timeline, and all these materials should have been to us by last week, so we could at least have them for the committee at the hall, that's the preparation meeting for this meeting. So we could talk about it, ask the questions, deliberate, get follow-up responses, especially, again, going to the cost, prior to tonight's meeting. And I understand that this was being, in the works, but it was not even mentioned to us at the committee at the hall, and I don't know why this wasn't even, we weren't given a heads up prior to today as far as, well, as Councilman Hamud said, we, over the weekend, he gave us kind of a draft of what was being worked on, but I, we had no idea that this was underway, because I think maybe if we had, you know, pulled our talents, we could have gotten it before us sooner. What I'm wondering is, we're on a really tight deadline as it is to get this done this year, so I too am wondering if we can change the one line of the resolution to remove the August deadline, just so that we can be sure that we're doing everything as appropriate.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
Council, Councilman Hamud, yeah?
I know that we have Chairman of the Charter Commission here to talk about them, their work on the translated ballot issue, because I know that's something that they've been looking into, wherever Hassan Abdullah is, yeah? If you could recognize him, please?
Yeah, when he gets up and states his name and address for the record, but you're indicating that the charter's taken this upon itself as well?
Yeah, so they've been investigating this for some time, and I do have other comments. I'd like him first.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sure. Hassan Abdullah, 641 Highview, thank you, Councilman Hamud.
Chairman.
Chairman of the Charter Commission.
Chairman of the Charter Commission, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I had original comments. I struggle with where I'm at now after hearing some of the comments from the council, because procedurally, I understand the need for due diligence, and I can respect that in most cases, and I think there's a difference between wanting to do due diligence on an item in its totality, which it seems like that's what some council members are wanting to do versus understanding the necessity of its timing specific to August. So I think what some council members are saying is that they want more time, and I'm not talking about the procedure of how this was brought to the agenda, that's a separate issue for you guys to handle logistically. I'm talking about understanding specifically why it's important to get it done for this August, and then I'll get to the charter. There's significant races happening this year in Dearborn, of which, for the first time, Dearborn will be under three different jurisdictions at the state level, and that's going to significantly impact the populations of which these voting rights would impact the most. That's number one. Number two, I want to commend my colleagues at the Charter Commission, because this wasn't an issue that needed much deliberation, because it's an issue that you vote on the spirit of the issue and understanding its extension. And so we quickly and unanimously voted to ensure that all of our meeting minutes in our first effective meeting are all made in Arabic, and I want to commend, I know Commissioner Hashem is here, who's heading our translation subcommittee, and it took us a few weeks to find someone in the community who was willing to do it for us pennies to the dollar. So to Mayor Hamud's point, there will be people who will be probably willing to do this for free if it means that the community will be able to have enhanced civic engagement. I will tell you, as someone whose family is, is involved in politics in the city going back 60 years, I still had family members, despite my own involvement in running for office, who were hindered from running, from voting because they don't understand what is being said. So now I shift where that effort and zealousness comes from, and with all due respect to any and all of the efforts made at the city level, particularly in the clerk's office, and I know that's a lot of work, but when I hear something like this takes a lot of work, that's what public service is. It takes a lot of work, and that's okay. I really don't think this is a budgetary issue. I would be hard-pressed to hear any argument talking about that there isn't enough money in this budget, because lord knows, there's contracts passed and things passed within this budget that probably don't even come near the value that this has long-term. So I would even further ask, aside from your affirmative vote on this, and affirmatively asking that this takes effect for the August elections, that the city clerk's office looks at its efforts and resources to identify what that would take, identify if that means you need to bring in some consultants or third parties to help assist with that, work with the mayor's administration to identify other areas in their departments who can contribute resources to that. That's what it takes. As, as our clerk, you are also, you are not only our record keeper, you are our elections officer, you are responsible for the administration of those elections, and not to say that you've taken any of those responsibilities for granted, I know there is extreme efforts made across the board. What I'm saying, though, is when you make a commitment to public service, increasing civic engagement falls under that umbrella, and ensuring that that is done for this year, I think, is extremely important. Like I said, my colleagues at the Charter Commission are not only looking at this in terms of translated minutes. We have already looked into language, requiring language access requirements within the charter, which will ensure that the governance of the city is one that is equitable to every single individual regardless of the language they speak, not just Arabic. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is it, we do have a couple follow-up comments by Councilwoman Burns?
I'm all set.
You're all set?
Councilman Hamud had, maybe something?
Councilman Hamud, are you, would you like to add anything to that, or you've got?
Well, I would just ask my colleagues what additional questions they have regarding this.
Well, they'll ask those. Are you, are you finished with your?
Well, because I keep hearing we need another meeting.
I understand, well, we're going to go over that in a time. Let's see, Councilman Alswaf, anything? I'd like to open it to the public so we can get this meeting moving through.
No, just a question for the clerk. When it came to shifting multiple ballot locations, printing voter cards, and staffing empty polling locations, you mentioned that you did have the capacity to implement that before the election, correct?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite, could you say it again? I'm sorry.
Yeah, when it came to shifting multiple ballot locations, printing voter cards, and staffing empty polling locations, you mentioned that you did have the capacity to get that done in time for the election, correct?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Awesome. So why are we hearing that there is a timing concern now to get something that's not as much of effort?
I think it's, I think this might be a little bit bigger effort, because we don't understand what is all involved. Again, when I talked to Dominion today, they said basically, quote unquote, you have no idea what the end of taking. no idea what the end of taking is for this." And I said, okay, after this meeting, I will get back to Dominion, I will get back to the Wayne County Clerk and find out, because I don't know. It's a big unknown out there, what has to be done.
Any other comments from my colleagues who are open up to the public?
Yeah.
Councilman Hamud?
I would just say that we are blessed in Dearborn to have multiple members from Secretary of State. Well, we have one as Chief of Staff, former Deputy Chief of Staff for the Secretary of State, and we have members of our community, such as Bilal Hamud, who is running for state rep, who also used to work as Secretary of State and is well aware of the timelines. So I would be more than happy, at first, I'm sure that Chief of Staff would be more than happy to work with the clerk's office on helping connect them with the Secretary of State, who we know is supportive of this resolution. And as far as the actual timeline, I mean, this came to my attention from Chief of Staff and other individuals who are very well informed on what it'll take in order to push this along. And yes, there is a date in there to ensure that we move to this timeline. And I would say, if we can't meet this timeline and we hear from the clerk's office as to why, you know, this isn't working, or whatever it is, I mean, I'd be happy to receive updates. I personally will be happy to help you in any way that I can as well. But I would say that I would keep the timing in there, and if we need to change it, we can change it later. So, and I think Bilal Hamud wanted to make a comment as well on just the timing.
Okay, Councilman, yeah.
Okay.
Are you all set with your comments?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other of my colleagues like to speak regarding this matter, my colleagues? Okay, if you're not, Councilman, yes, sir.
I don't know if we're going to get another opportunity to speak, so I'm going to just ask that the timeline resolved portion of this be separated, according to our Council Rules of Order 8.3, and we could vote separately on that resolution than the rest of it.
Okay, that's noted, Councilman. We'll revisit that before we go forward.
Okay, I just wasn't sure, because...
No, I got it. So you're asking just the paragraph before the final one, the actual August timeline?
No, well...
He's asking for the specific line item that says resolved.
Well, there's three, there's...
Yeah, no, I said August is the last one.
He wants to split the resolved, the timely translation for all election material to be completed for the August.
I got, that's the one I got circled.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mike, good question.
Okay, absolutely. We have to go, that's a process and procedure aspect we'll go through in a minute. Councilwoman Burns?
Thank you, Council President. On the note of process and procedure, if this is to pass this evening with the August 2022 timeline intact, if for any reason we were to discover, the clerk's office were to discover that that timeline were not doable, could we go back and amend? What would that look like process-wise?
Yeah, well, I've said this many times in many years, so Jeremy, you can, I mean, Mr. Romer, you can comment if I misspeak. The action of this body can be undone with an action of this body.
Right.
So there's no question that anything we do, we just had up here saying that if we pledge it, we take it out. This body makes a ruling, can then go back and change it as well. Now, that wasn't the case in the prior administration. They had indicated that you have to have resolve, you have to have some aspect of closure, and I've continuously said that that's not true. So, Mr. Romer, is that true? What am I, statement that any action by this body can be redone by this body?
Yes, I agree with that statement.
Okay.
Thank you, Council President. Just wanted that on the record for folks who might be concerned about the timeline. I understand that it's relatively quick. We're looking at roughly four months. But again, I think prioritizing access and valuing our democracy in this way is worth the challenge that a time crunch would present. So I would, I would support moving forward with this timeframe, and if for any reason it needs to be modified, it can be.
Thank you, Councilwoman Burns. Any other comments?
I may, Council President?
Yes, Mayor.
Just as a former legislator, in Lansing, a lot of legislation have hard deadline dates within them. Sometimes they don't always meet them. And so as a legislative body, we would always go back and amend the dates. So just, you know, another legislator perspective from the state.
Thank you, Mayor. Can I like it up to, open it up to the floor? Anyone would like to speak on this item, please step forward, state your name and address for the record, and please be reminded you have a three-minute time limitation kept by the clerk.
Bilal Hamud, 16860 West Outer Drive. Can I request an extension of a minute? I'm going to get in some numbers here, and I'd like to...
Well, that's how, I'd rather you stay to, you should ask for the extension when you get there. Let's get you the first three minutes, see if you can get it wrapped up.
Okay. So first of all, I want to commend Councilman Hamud, who's been working diligently on making sure that this is done properly with the right data and taking language access as a priority for this administration and for this city. I do want to start off by saying Secretary of State Jocelyn Benson, who is here with us today, has been a champion of language access, and she's the reason why a lot of this foundation exists, right, through the Language Access Task Force, through the data that she provided, and the prioritization of making this initiative of language access in our voter, voting systems, promoting democracy, she's made it all possible. So I want to give her that recognition. Now, I can tell you, as the, thank you for recognizing the former Chair of the Language Access Task Force, there have been years of effort and data that have gone into making sure that this is accurate. So that 5% requirement, or 10,000, whichever criterion is met first, that is what's mandated by the Federal Voting Rights Act. And for any other community, any other population, any other non-English-speaking resident, this would be what's verified, what works, and what allows them to get the ballots and voting materials that they want in their city. And the city of Hamtramck is actually a really good example, because it is one of the few cities in the state that have that sort of requirement. Now, I can tell you, working intimately with that city, it's a very simple process. You make the notice to the county, you let Kathy Garrett and her office know that this is a priority of your city, and you let them know that you want the translations done, the programming done, and as long as it's 60 to 75 days before the election, it can be done. So it is possible, and it's actually quite simple. When it comes to the actual cost, I will tell you that the, after being on the phone today with both the county clerk's office, the State Bureau of Elections, and with Dominion, it's $125 per precinct. And so a city like Dearborn, the translation cost, the per precinct programming cost, and that voting access terminal, being able to utilize those, the translation audio, like you said, it should just only be in one dialect, that formal dialect, and having that program will be $4,000. So when we talk about the actual cost, I can give you almost fully confident that that's around the price you'll pay even with printing of those ballots. Now, I want to stress that there's additional voter materials in here, so I would recommend even more funding be allocated, but within that 4,000 price range, you'll be able to get these ballots translated. So that's some data and some numbers, hopefully that'll help clarify. I cannot stress the comments made by Councilman Hamud. There isn't a price on democracy. There isn't a price on voter accessibility. There should not be a price on language access. And when we talk about engaging these residents, making them feel included in the systems that are made for them, truly included in the system that exists to serve every one of our residents, we should not be drawing lines, and we shouldn't be putting a price tag on it. So I hope that you all will vote to affirm this and the timeline that's set forth, because it is the right thing to do. And in any other system where the census did represent this community, that system would protect this community. And right now, it doesn't, so it's up to you, the council. So I implore you to take on that responsibility. Thank you.
Sorry, your turn.
Thank you. See, you made it right on time. Thank you very much.
Excellent.
I really appreciate that.
I gave you a few extra seconds, even.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Hamud, and I do thank you for the data. It's very helpful to put a number on it. I appreciate it. Anyone else from the public like to speak on this item? Please step forward, state your name and address for the record, and you're kindly reminded you have a three-minute time limitation.
Okay. Hi, my name is Eliana Hussain, and I live at 3535 Syracuse Street. First of all, thank you for your time. I'm sure we're going to be here all night. And I thank also Councilmember Hamud for bringing this before us today. My mom, Afaf Ahmed, she's running for state rep for the 15th district and cannot be here tonight, and she sends her regards. She wanted me to express on behalf of her that it is very important to have the ballot translated, and is in support of this, because it's essential, essential in helping our city becoming, you know, electorally equal. As councilmembers, I'm sure you've heard many stories and instances that have happened on election day. You have people walking into city council that, sorry, city hall that only speak Arabic. I saw it last August when I went to change my address back to Dearborn and vote as well. Someone from a different department had to be called to help that person. It took over 20 minutes just to get someone else there, because no one on the first floor could speak Arabic. I mean, obviously, I would have helped him, but I couldn't be able to speak Arabic. If there was a translated ballot, nobody would have been needed to be called, and that person would have been helped faster, and the voting process would have been faster for him, as well as everyone else in the room trying to run, find someone else from a different department that speaks Arabic. You also hear on election day where people are helping non-English speakers vote and bubbling in a different person they said they wanted to vote for. It is not an uncommon act. You would have to be naive to believe our election process is equal right now. It is not, and a decision can be made today to put our city in the right direction. Another thing is the timing concern. So if the timing concern is also about maybe not having enough staff, because I can understand that, because I also work, like Charter President said, Hassan, that there are people that will help for free. I'm one of them. Anybody will help for free. There's so many people in this room, there's a reason there's a big turnout today, because they're here out of the, you know, they probably had a long workday, and they're here to hear about it and to make sure this goes through. Another thing is the cost issue. I have fundraised for so many events and gotten a lot of money. I will do a fundraiser for you guys. I have no problem. Do you know how many people in this room would give you money right now? I swear to God, there's so many people in this room that would. I just had two fundraisers this year. I'll go through another one. And even, I even told myself I wouldn't do it, but I'll go ahead and do it right now. Another thing is, the city clerk, George Durandy, mentioned only one Bengali person used in Hamtramck. There is going to be so many people that are going to use it here. I can tell you my grandma's going to be one of them. She'd be so excited. She's going to take a picture of him, post it on Facebook. She'll be so excited. It's such a, it's such a, it's such a new thing, and it's so exciting. Another thing is also, the Dearborn Public Schools, when I was in elementary school, I remember bringing home, like, translated stuff to my parents, or translated stuff to my grandma. My mom would look over, and she'd correct everything, and she told me to take it back to the secretary. Like, that's how much they loved seeing things were in Arabic, and they also wanted to make sure it was accurate as well. Another thing is, like Councilmember Hamud mentioned, is all election material and city announcements of citizens should be in Arabic, or even other languages as well. Obviously, we're not only trying to cater to the Middle Eastern citizens in Dearborn. Everything should be, you know? If it's not, that's how you people, people like, you know, before November, thought, some people were already on council, and they weren't even on council. Same thing with mayor-wise. I talked to some people that thought Mayor Hamud was already mayor, but he wasn't yet. I'm like, Habibi, you got to go in November and vote. Like, it's things like that. So, and another thing is to Councilmember Herrick, I love you so much, obviously, but no matter how something came to you, we got to vote on it now. Because like you said, like everyone said here today, there is a time constraint, you know? We have to vote on things now, otherwise it's never going to happen. And like you said, you're not sure why it ever came up before. Well, it's coming up before today, and we got to vote on it. Like, I'm so passionate about this. We need to get this done. And yeah, thank you for your time, and yeah, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the audience like to speak on this item? Please step forward and state your name and address for the record. Anyone else? Okay.
You know, I let her go four minutes. So do I have to let everybody go four minutes now?
I'm so sorry. I think I'm a little quiet.
Well, let's see, yeah, we'll make it for an equitable...
My mistake.
Ma'am, go ahead.
Cheyenne Brown, 8840 Whitlock. So I work elections, and I have since the presidential primaries. I've been chairperson the past couple of elections, I don't know how many. If we're worried about cost, I make $225 when I work the election. I will give it back if you get translated ballots. I will give it back, and I will help you get them out, and I will help figure out how we can get them, because I can't tell you how crushed I am when I can't help these people who are saying, "I'm voting for the first time. I can't read this. Can you translate it for me?" It crushes me. I don't know, I can't, I can't make any assumptions, but I would assume that there is at least one or two people on this board that have never had to worry about filling out any kind of paperwork in a language that they didn't understand. At least. And I think that we can all have some empathy and say that we need to provide some accessibility, give them the ability to use the democracy that anyone else who is fluent in English has. And we got to do it. We got to do it, and I don't know why there's any speculation on why we wouldn't.
Thank you.
Okay, next. I may, Council President?
Yes, Mayor.
Keep your check. We want you to still get paid as an election worker. And again, as each administration, just want to reaffirm, $20,000, I mean, we can skip planting flowers at some of our Dearborn signs and capturing more money. We can avoid cutting the grass for a week and do something that's far more...
Hold on now, Mayor. We need those flowers.
Maybe the mayor of... There are so many things that we can do to allocate $20,000. And so, you know, we've allocated more for a lot less important items. So the administration is fully committed to funding this effort, and $20,000 is not a lot in a $130 million budget. We can find it, I promise you, as the mayor.
Director Hawke is...
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much. I appreciate your comments, and I think you made it abundantly clear that the administration is fully supportive of this and finding the funding necessary for it. Anyone else from the public? Yes, ma'am. Would you like to come forward, state your name and address for the record?
Hello, my name is Nada Al-Hanuti. My address is 22384 Wilson. My name is Nada. I am the Executive Director of MGAJ in Michigan. For those who don't know, it's a nonprofit dedicated to politically empowering Muslim and minority communities, and today I'm here just for that reason. MGAJ, we've proudly translated ballots for loads of residents throughout the years. Right here, I'm here today to empower people like my mother to go vote without me as a translator. And to respect to Councilwoman Paris, you said it's rushed, I say it's long overdue. We have a population here of 52% that speak Arabic at home. We can be the model city for immigrant communities. And to respect to the city clerk, we have been, me, MGAJ, legal voters, access, and all of our partner organizations have been, have been having conversations with you for about a year now about translated ballots. So you might have heard it from the council today, but you have heard it through partner organizations and nonprofit for about a year now. So it's not relatively compact for you. So I'm just here to urge you, to plead with you, to preserve our democracy, to make sure that people like my mother feel empowered to make their vote heard autonomously. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hanuti. Thank you very much. Anyone else here from the public to speak on this item? Please step forward and state your name for the record. Okay. Yes, sir.
Alabaz, oh, wow. You guys changed the audio system.
You need to raise it up.
My name's Alabaz Farah. I just wanted to share some of the sentiment that's been communicated here today. I think there's nothing more American than expanding the right to democracy to our neighbors, to our residents in the city. And to Councilman Hamud's point, to the way this ordinance was written, it's an inclusive ordinance, which I think is something we all should be proud of. I think oftentimes, it's important to realize that this is a moment in history for the city of Dearborn. This is a moment in history for the state of Michigan and for this region. Truly, this is a way for Dearborn to continue to be leader, uh, in the region and in Michigan and be leader, the, the standard city, the city that is a standard for others to follow in, uh, and being an inclusive, diverse, and welcoming place. Uh, I know the sentiments seem overly positive from the council and I hope this is adopted. Um, and again, I look forward to in any way helping the clerk, you know, in this process and helping in any way to make this happen. But more than that, this is an excellent opportunity for Dearborn to make history and being an inclusive place and being, uh, a city that continues to welcome new families and new individuals to participate and have a sense of ownership in their neighborhoods. So, I urge you all, please, let's adopt this ordinance, uh, and continue to make Dearborn a leader into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Sepharad. Thank you very much.
Council President?
Yes, Councilman Hamud.
Just one comment on one of the comments earlier was, I think, Ms. Al-Hanuti brought up the numbers. Um, I did make sure, by the way, in all of your packets to send you a data table from 2015. I haven't had a chance to look at it. I would be more than happy to read you through it.
No, no.
So, this is from 2015. Uh, we have, no, no, I just, I want to make sure this is super clear.
No, no, no. It's, it's noted.
So, based on the 2015 numbers, 35,425 residents speak Arabic at home, based on census track data, which is, uh, 41.9%. Based on 2015 data, of course, we knew on the 2020 census, it got revised higher.
Yes.
I don't have the detailed 2020 census data because of COVID. It's been delayed from the federal government. But I know that there are many groups right now working that would be more than happy to give you all a precinct by precinct breakdown of exactly how many Arabic-speaking homes there are in each census tract. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other following comments from the members of public here tonight to speak? Yes, please come up, state your name and address for the record. Just a kind reminder, we have a three-minute limitation.
Hi, my name is Mishu, uh, 2229 North Franklin. Um, I really want to, um, uh, thank, uh, Councilwoman Hamud. He personally know this topic is very dear to my heart, like, like many of the other maybe activists who worked on the poll or assisted. We know how much the language is a barrier and I personally, like many, assisted translating for the voter. And in terms of the timeline, it's a very essential topic right now because people are already maybe confused because of the redistricting. So, the language act, uh, like an extra barrier for them. And in terms of the money, again, if Aliana can, um, fundraise, um, I offer my free language skill to, um, translate as someone who know how to read, write, and, uh, translate the Arabic language. But if Mayor Hamud insists he wants to pay, I can do it at a very discounted price to pay the bill. So, uh, I pledge to help with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Miso. Any, any other comments from the floor before we vote on this item? All right, let's have order. Any other comments from anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this topic?
Mr. Council President, if I have a moment?
Yes, yes, Mr. Clerk, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, I would have to agree with like 99.9% of what everybody's saying here tonight. Uh, and, and just so we know that we haven't totally neglected this issue, the ballots have been in Arabic on sample ballots since, uh, the 2020 election, which means that if anybody wanted a, a sample ballot in Arabic, they were available at all 48 precincts, uh, in the last election for the mayor, for the clerk, and for the city council as well. Whereas all they would have to do is, uh, ask for one. We printed out actually 2,500 Arabic ballots. There were 50 available in every precinct. And not only that, but we blew up the ballot and we put it on every, um, every banner or every board, whiteboard that we had at every location. Uh, and so, the only difference between what you're asking for tonight, of course, is to make sure that those ballots could be used and put into the tabulator rather than transferring it from the Arabic ballot onto the English ballot. So, the, the process has been out there. The process has been, uh, used again at least for two or three elections. And I want to also know that out of those 2,500, and again, I'm hoping that this number goes way, way up when we implement this. But when, uh, the last election, we printed 2,500 and 21 were actually used out of the 22,500 that we printed. So, I'm hoping that when we, hopefully this passes, then we'll be able to get the word out and more people will take advantage of it.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Mayor, would you like to make a comment?
No, thank you so much. Just to the comments of the clerk, what I would say is, you know, we have, I see AMPAK present here. I, I know members of APAC are here. I know MGAJ is here. Um, they all translated, uh, sample ballots as well and passed them before individuals walked into the actual precincts. And so, folks might not have taken the city sample ballot that was translated, but they certainly walked in with translated materials that even multiple candidates also shared. I think the bottom line is this, I've been Arab-American my whole life. And the only time that I, my recognition of Arab-American came was when I, whenever I traveled and TSA recognized me as Arab-American or Border Patrol recognized me as Arab-American. Um, if the Arab-Americans were recognized within the Voting Writing Act, this would be mandated on us, the city of Dearborn. If we were recognized within the census, we would see the Arab-Americans would receive, uh, a recognition under the federal government to have access to additional resources. And so, I think as the city of Dearborn, as the capital of Arab-America with the largest concentration of Arab-Americans outside of the Middle East, I think it is our duty to finally get this done in 2022. Um, and so, you know, I, I think it's time to take what has been a disadvantage in my travel, uh, and make a, a, an accessibility, uh, for those who are just trying to vote in the city that they've called home for many years, if not their entire lives.
Thank you, Mayor. Another speaker from the floor, please come forward. Commissioner?
Uh, good evening. Sam Baydoun, 15, West Lane, Dearborn. Uh, I'm the Wayne County Commissioner for the city of Dearborn. Uh, first, let me thank you and applaud you, Commissioner, Councilman, I almost made you a commissioner. Because I'm used.
Not after your job.
Not this year, no.
I'm used to calling my colleagues commissioners. Councilman Hamud, I applaud you for your effort for bringing this forward. I believe it's long overdue. Uh, I just had a quick question because I'm sorry, I just came. I had another meeting. Uh, did we talk about the cost of putting this on?
Yes.
Approximately?
Very minimal. I mean, we had some, uh, information from, uh, Mr. Hamud who worked on, uh, Bilad Hamud who worked on it.
Roughly how much?
And the mayor's approximately $20,000 at the top.
I have no idea what it's going to cost.
Between $4,000 and $20,000.
What I would like to say, we have a lot of talent in the, uh, Arab-American community here with the different organizations. We have a lot of volunteers that would help in the process. And as the Wayne County Commissioner for the city of Dearborn, I will do whatever it takes to get assistance from the Wayne County Clerk's office, Kathy Garrett's office. I will lobby as hard as Mr. Hamud, you know, to make sure that this is voted on and gets on, uh, on the, on the August ballot. But, uh, I hope all my friends here on the city council will support this resolution tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, Mr. Hamud. Mr. Baydoun, I apologize.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Salah Ali, Dearborn resident. Um, I just wanted to follow up to Clerk Duraney's comment regarding sample ballots. The problem with that is that each ballot that each voter uses come, they don't come in a set chronological order. So, it could be very, um, confusing to the Arabic voter, assuming if they just count the number of names in a ballot and for each of the races, that they would correspond to the actual.
They did correspond. We made sure they correspond.
In one race and not the other.
I, at least.
No.
Let's stay order. Councilman, let's stay orderly.
Yeah.
Mr. Clerk, let him finish his comments. I know, let him finish his comments that you can read, you can ask for it.
So, from my experience and what I've seen, I, I did not see that to be the case. But just for everyone's awareness and how this came about, about four weeks ago today, um, there was, uh, an agenda item to include the approval from city council, um, on a measure to redistrict the precincts here in the city of Dearborn. I was here before you all today, um, addressing the concerns and doing it for this year. Um, the fact that we're on a, a four-year election cycle and it's interesting to see the same or majority of the individuals that were for that, despite the comments of it being, uh, accelerated in incorporation as well as the lack of communication, they have an issue with incorporating something that's proactive and beneficial, um, to the voter. So, uh, it, to me, it just seems hypocritical at best and, uh, I, I just hope there is some reconsideration in knowing the impacts, whether it be positive or negative in either cases, to be considered. Um, when it comes to this, I only see positive. Um, it improves, uh, the voter, uh, civic engagement and being, allowing them to be empowered and going out to vote in, in a language that they understand. Whereas, uh, the last agenda item in redistricting precincts only has the potential of suppressing, um, the vote because when an individual expects to be at a precincts to vote and then at the 11th hour realizes it changed, that is not only going to discourage them, but possibly never vote again. So, I, I would hope that the understanding and the thought process between these two agenda items are, uh, inverse and allowing this to be approved today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ali. Any, uh, any other comments from the floor? Come forward, state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Hamud, for, uh, the suggestion you bring on. And I think, uh, I live in United States of America for almost 31 years. Uh, thank God when I came here, I learned English and I vote in English from the time I have my citizenship in 1994. Uh, but right now, we have a lot of people, they are coming from overseas to have the democracy, to come to live in this beautiful land. We need this to approve tonight from all of you because this is very important. All of us need these voters. All of us, we need to make these people to feel they are in their country, even if they're not speaking English, but in the future, they're kids, they're going to be here, they're going to represent this city, they're going to represent this country. Thank you very much and I hope we're going out from this, uh, from this, uh, from, from this here, uh, with everything is approved. And I forgot to say my name, Walid Fadama for 8803.
Walid Fadama, we were going to ask. All right, thank you very much, Mr. Fadama. Any other comments or questions from, uh, comments from the floor? Okay, please step forward and state your name and address for the record.
I came to this, uh, the mayor's, uh, meet and greet and I never planned to be at this council meeting, but here I am. Uh, Mary Bujia, 7 Cherry Hill Court, Dearborn. Um, I've lived in Dearborn all my life and I've witnessed all of the change and diversity in the city that I love. Uh, but I've also been an election worker and like the lady back there, I put in my time at the task and I have also helped first-time voters and instructed them how to vote. Um, lately, I've done the absentee ballots. So, I actually have a question. Um, because when we're, um, if a person asks for an absentee ballot, then they would have to identify which kind of ballot they want to receive, right? And then when we count them, um, you know, I'm thinking of the implementation of all of this and what you're going to have to go through at the city clerk's office. So, give him all due respect and whatever he needs to come up with. It's going to be a complicated thing. Uh, you know, your, your expression and want to do something is correct, but how you're going to implement it is really going to be an inducing task, so.
Thank you, Ms. Bujia. Anyone else from the, further from the floor to like to speak on this item? Okay, great. Mr. Romer, just for a procedural aspect, Councilman Abraham is asking to sever a resolved clause that indicates that timely translation of all election materials shall be completed for the August 2022 primary election. Is that correct, Mr. Abraham?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Romer, for procedural aspect, uh, I believe he has, that is an offer. We have to have a support and then a four votes on that item. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So, so my colleagues understand, uh, this is to withdraw, to sever that portion that was just read into the record out in separate, in a separate motion so that we would vote for that separately. Is that correct, Mr. Abraham? Or you just wanted to, Councilman Abraham, we're just removed completely at this time?
No, I'd like to, I'd like to be able.
Split it.
To split it and, uh, support, support the language aspect. I'm just, I'm still uncertain of the timing.
Okay, do we have a support to split that part of the, the action from any of my colleagues? Offered by Councilman Abraham?
Support.
Supported by Councilwoman Herrick. Okay, at this time, uh, Mr. Clerk, we would need a vote. A yes vote would be to the affirmative to split and remove that clause that I read into the record. Do my colleagues understand a yes vote would remove that? You need four votes.
Not remove it, split.
I'm sorry, to split it.
It's a motion.
Right, a motion, well, it's the sever. He ended the, the right section, so. Mr. Clerk, can we go ahead and have a roll call vote since we have an offer by Councilman Abraham and a support by Councilwoman Herrick?
Yes.
To sever, uh, split, uh, the section of the resolve indicating that timely action of all election materials shall be completed for the August 22, uh, primary election?
Okay, we'll start with Councilmember Paris.
No.
Councilmember Asawafi.
No.
Councilmember Herrick.
Yes.
Councilmember Burns.
No.
Councilmember Sarini.
No.
Councilmember Hamud.
No.
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
We have five nays. The motion to split does not go through.
All right, thank you. So, uh, Mr. Romer, we would then carry on from this part, uh, to the next, to the motion as stated and as, uh, we have in front of us. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, can we have a roll call vote on that as well?
On item, uh, 34, we'll start with Councilman Asawafi.
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick.
Yes.
Councilmember Burns.
Yes.
Councilmember Sarini.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Council President Sarini.
Yes.
Councilman Hamud.
Yes.
Councilman Abraham.
Yes.
Councilman Paris.
Yes.
Seven nays to motion.
All right, thank you guys for being so enthusiastic. We appreciate that. And again, thanks, thank you, Councilman Hamud, for all your work on that. Uh, Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Uh, let's find out where we're at.
Yeah, where were we at?
Eighteen.
What number?
Number eighteen.
Eighteen, all right, let's go ahead.
Resolution by, uh, Councilmembers Asawafi and Hamud approving the lease renewal from Verizon Wireless on the police communications tower in the amount of 37,500 per year with a lease term for a five-year period.
Please keep it down over there.
With four additional renewal options and a 3% annual rent escalator. Also requesting that the mayor be authorized to execute the contract on behalf of the city and requesting immediate effect.
All right, thank you. In 1995, the city entered into a lease agreement with Verizon for space on its antenna for our police communications tower. Part of that grievance included that Verizon would build a new tower and transfer their ownership over to the city. In exchange for Verizon, uh, building the new tower for the city, Verizon paid to reduce rent for 25 years of the life expensive of the tower. The lease expired in 2020 and Verizon has continued to pay the rent as a held over lease tenant. Verizon now, uh, seeks to renew the lease to the, um, to remain on the tower and with the rent at 37,500 per year, which is an increase from the previous contract of 12,000 per year. The lease will be for a total of 25 years with a 3% annual rate escalator, which was not in the last contract as well. As a result, the payments, uh, for the 20-year, 25-year period will be in excess of $1.3 million. It is recommended by Corporation Council to prove, to approve the proposed lease and authorize the mayor to execute it. Is there any questions or comments on this item? Okay, hearing none, unanimous roll will be attached. Next item, please.
Item 19, resolution by Councilmembers Asawafi and Herrick extending the city's moratorium on medical marijuana caregiver applications until the summer 31st, 2022 and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, on March 23rd, 2021, the council unanimously adopted a moratorium that suspended the acceptance and review of all, and approval of all applicants related to non-residential caregiver operations for 90 days. The council unanimously extended the moratorium again in June, August, and December of 2021. The moratorium is currently set to expire April 4th, 2022. Multiple study sessions have been held in the past. Uh, with the last, the city staff presented the council with two amended zoning ordinances found in Chapter 5 of the city code and amendments to the city ordinances that address regulations for caregiver facilities in the city. Due to the expiration of this moratorium nearing and the current, and there's not currently enough time for the council to adapt or any of the recommendation amendments made to the caregiver ordinance or zoning ordinance. This extension will ensure that the council had adequate time to hold a following setup session, study session and allow the city staff to draft an ordinance that will, uh, strike a fair balance between the demands of the council and the public and avoid a reversion back to the existing caregiver ordinance. Any questions or comments on this item? Councilman Abraham.
I just have a question. Um, do we have a timeline for bringing something more permanent forward?
That's for me.
I don't know, do we have any study sessions scheduled or planned?
No, we have not scheduled any study sessions. It was my understanding, Mayor, if you'd like to chime in, that you had offered some information that we were going to have towards the end of the year after we get through our budget regarding people in the state that have familiarity with the Caregiver Act.
Correct, thank you, Council President. To your question, Councilman Abraham, our goal is to have a study session in the August, September timeline where we bring down the newly branded cannabis regulatory agency down to the city of Dearborn so we can speak with their leadership. Additionally, my, many members of my staff are working on potential solutions to help mitigate the equity issue that's in the initial ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Abraham, did you have any other questions?
No, I just tried to get a feel for the timeline. I appreciate that. Hopefully, we'll have something ready for the fall.
Absolutely, thank you. All right, any questions or comments from members of the public? Hearing is seen, none unanimous, roll will be attached. Next item, please.
Item 20, resolution by Councilmembers Sarini and Asawafi authorizing to make only the benefit of retiree healthcare available to former Police Chief Ronald Hadad and provide him with a police department retirement card subject to execution of a complete waiver and release of all claims and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, thank you. The former Chief Ronald Hadad was an employee with the city as the police chief from December 15, 2008, and his employment ended January 1st, 2022, serving our community for over 13 years. When Chief Hadad was hired in 2008, the police officers were still eligible for retiree healthcare benefit. At that time, Hadad declined the benefit because he was receiving them through the city of Detroit, which subsequently was taken away as part of the Detroit bankruptcy. Absent the city's, absent his waiver, Chief Hadad's waiver, he would have qualified for this retiree healthcare on the date of his separation. It is, it is not a dispute that the chief's loss of healthcare from Detroit. He renewed the city's current employer healthcare in 2000 and, I'm sorry, 2014. However, it is disputed whether the chief was, had renegotiated for retiree healthcare with Mayor O'Reilly. The cost is approximately $3,300 per year, and it will come from the post-employment benefits funding. In effort to resolve this dispute, the Corporation Council is recommending that the council make only the benefit for the retiree healthcare available to Chief Hadad and subject to all execution of complete waiver and release of all claims. So, any questions or comments on this item? Councilman Paris.
Thank you, Council President Three. A question that I have, we went over at great length during the committee of the whole, but I only have a couple of questions just for clarification. If I could ask the administration or our Corporation Council, the executive and administrative salary plan during Chief Ron Hadad's employment with the city of Dearborn between 2008 and January 1st of 2002, was his salary and benefits under the executive and administrative salary plan?
So, yeah, they mirror the executive and administrative salary plan for the directors at that time. As you can tell, he's in paid time off as police are not. They don't have that program. So, it was mirroring E and A.
Okay, hearing affirmative that he was. If so, did Chief Ron Hadad qualify then for post-retirement healthcare as an employee who either had 25 years of actual accredited service or was in fact 55 years or older and had at least 10 years of accredited service?
So, we're mixing benefits. So, the charter, Councilman Paris, requires the averaging of all full-time benefits under 6.8. The E and A provision is different than the police contract. And the benefits, while they align for the director, Chief Hadad at the time, the police chief, under E and A, he gets the benefit of both. He, the requirement under E and A is 10 and 60. Hadad met that. The requirement under the police contract is 55 or 10 years. He met that at the time of separation. So, under both, regardless of how you average this scenario, Chief Hadad was eligible for retiree healthcare when he was employed at the start. And when he separated from service, he would have met the criteria to separate with post-employment healthcare had he taken and not waived it.
Okay, I appreciate that clarification. So, I would just ask the administration or our Corporation Council, if those are affirmative answers, why do we have this before council when we don't usually vote on benefits? And the reason why I'm bringing this up, I went back, 2010, 2014, 2018. I watched council meetings, and I looked at the resolutions back from those times because, as you know, Mayor, from your administration, in early January, you started bringing forth some of the salaries that you are proposing for your department heads. So, if that is the only thing that comes before city council is the salaries, what is the reasoning behind that? Why, in fact, this item is coming for city council to approve or not?
So, I'd be happy to speak to that. The reason I brought it back before the council is because of the memorandum written in 2008 by then-Mayor Jack O'Reilly that correlates to the setting of the salary and the resolution that accompanied that. In that memorandum, it indicates that he was waiving the benefit. So, I did not feel comfortable reinstating a benefit unilaterally on the administration side when that memo went to this body when it was approving the salary. There was a salary component set by this council that presumably, I can only speak presumably, that he received a higher salary because of the waiver of that benefit. Since that resolution was premised on that memorandum, I felt it was appropriate to bring that item back to you for approval rather than unilaterally offering or declining the request.
Thank you for that explanation.
All right, thank you, Mr. Romer. I, for the record, I disagree with that analogy. I do appreciate that the administration being transparent and bringing forward any question whether there's doubt or not. But for me, this body speaks through resolutions, and the resolution that was drafted in 2008 in the resolved clause does not make mention of a print quote-quote or taking of one asset, one forgiving or laying away of one asset in order to get another higher salary. In fact, I read the memo completely. It also indicated that there was set salary provision, union requirements between captains and lieutenants, and lieutenants and commanders, and that gun payment and clothing payment were also considered in this. And that was the whereas in the regular aspect of what the mayor was requesting. But I want to make it abundantly clear that what has happened today in the resolution in 2008, it did not indicate that this was taken in lieu of. And I want to make sure that everybody understands as well. If you have our employees that say, I don't want to take your healthcare because my wife works for the schools or is better through her job, and then we say, because you did that, you're not eligible later on, that's a very big concern for me of setting a precedent in that way. I also want my, make my colleagues aware, as well as the member of the public, that our chief has served and is in our community very well during the time he was here. And no matter what the opinion was, this would be setting a precedent because there's been no chief of this city that I could find that did not have retiree healthcare at the end of his term. So, I appreciate the city bringing this forward. I do understand, Councilman Paris is questioning because I would have probably indicated that this should not have come in before us as well because the resolved clause does not indicate that he took a higher salary. In fact, he took a lower salary than what he was currently paid to come here to be the chief of Dearborn Police. But the point is, the resolution does not indicate that nowhere. And I do believe that this was also negotiated for between his legal counsel and ours, and I understand why it's brought forward. But I wanted to make that abundantly clear that my reading of the resolutions do not indicate that something was given up for the other side. So, Councilwoman Herrick, would you like to speak?
Yes, please, thank you, Council President. The, the fact that the healthcare was not taken was in the memo, not in the resolution? So, it is, it's defined there, but if we're just looking at the resolution. My question is then, in 2008, it came before city council for approval. Why didn't it go before city council for approval in 2014 when he then began receiving healthcare benefits from the city?
Yeah, I want to, I want to be clear. We're talking two different benefits. One is active employee healthcare, and the other is the retiree healthcare benefit. When he lost his healthcare in Detroit, he was required to have healthcare. So, we offered him our current healthcare, which is an average of the benefit under the plan provisions that you set under the charter under 6.8. So, he was eligible to enroll in active healthcare under the charter pursuant to the charter. Here, the reason it's brought forward, I appreciate Council President's point that the resolution doesn't specifically speak to the benefit being waived or what happened. My concern was that the salary that you set was premised on that memo, presumably. That's how I interpreted it. So, I didn't feel comfortable unilaterally making that decision and wanted to bring it back for you for deliberation.
And if I may add, Councilwoman, just because an employee enrolls in active employee healthcare does not mean they are eligible for retiree healthcare.
No, I understand that. I'm just wondering why the, it did not come before council again in 2014, that the circumstances were changing? Because originally, he was hired without having the benefit of healthcare.
Of retiree healthcare.
Of either.
No.
He didn't have employee healthcare when he was hired.
Yeah.
He had a medical spending account, but he didn't have the benefit of employee healthcare. That's what he waived.
Active employee healthcare is a benefit provided under 6.8 of the charter for your directors. It's the average benefit. So, so if he ever lost healthcare, he would be eligible as an active employee to participate in active employee healthcare. That is different than the retiree healthcare benefit we're talking about now. He never enrolled in the healthcare savings plan. Chief Hadad was never in that plan.
But he began receiving healthcare benefits because he was eligible to receive them in 2014.
Active healthcare benefits.
Active healthcare benefits. Okay, I'm, because that, it's just not anything that was part of our documentation as we were trying to figure out, you know, which benefits he received over the years and what might be expected in retirement. It was surprising that wasn't discussed at the time when he began receiving active healthcare benefits.
The reason it was not in the backup is because I'm not speaking, this item does not speak to active healthcare. It speaks solely and entirely to the retiree healthcare component. So, that's what I was addressing with the backup material and giving you the history related to just the retiree healthcare component. I did not find his active healthcare participation relevant to this decision.
If I may get Councilman Paris's question about why we're getting it forward?
Yes, Mayor.
And kind of the premise behind this proposal. You know, I think the question I asked as mayor was, in 2008, if Chief, if then-Chief Hadad
Oh, sorry, I had my hand on the microphone. In 2008, if then-Chief Hadad did not have retiree healthcare from Detroit Police Department, and he was offered the chief position in the city of Dearborn, would he have opted into retiree healthcare? And I think we'd all agree there'd be resounding yes. Now, unfortunately, Detroit went into bankruptcy, and therefore, he lost his retiree healthcare. Now, there's a long he-said, she-said argument over whether this was offered to him under the last administration or not. But we also understand that we can't bring before us the previous mayor to have this conversation honestly. And so, you know, I think for us, for a chief that served us for over a decade, who had the opportunity to enroll before Detroit went into bankruptcy, you know, and who left in good standing, you know, we parted ways in good standing. Is he somebody who should be eligible to opt into retiree healthcare that was stripped from him due to a bankruptcy? And we believe the administration, it should be, regardless of any even personal relationship with Hadad or not, whether you like or don't like. I think there's a moral question of, in 2008, he could have opted in. He was promised the benefit that was taken away. Would he have taken it if he didn't have it? And I think the answer there really is yes. Additionally, what I'll add is, and I think you noticed the note, you know, it's a modest cost of $3,500 per year, you know, for however many years. And, you know, if not, I think this will proceed to litigation in terms of, was it actually offered verbally to Chief Hadad or not under the previous administration? And, you know, I, I think we're just trying to do the right thing, avoid all the staff costs that would be allocated to such litigation, and really just try to do right by somebody who served the community for over a decade.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman, does that answer your question?
Just one follow-up.
Of course.
And Councilman Paris was giving a scenario of if an employee started with somebody else's benefits. Are there, we're just, my concern is also just setting a precedent. And if there was where to happen with any other employee and they had not participated in, and they had denied it, they had denied wanting retiree healthcare when they began here, I would want them to be, have the same opportunity. The question is, is there a scenario where that has ever happened in your knowledge?
No, I, I know of none with that scenario, and you have no directors, new directors at any point now that would be eligible for this benefit. So, setting the precedent would never exist going forward.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman, Councilman Abraham.
So, I was there when this all started, and it seems kind of messy and paper. But I want to just be clear, what's absent from the resolution that was discussed about benefits was never intended to be part of the resolution. The council is only empowered to set the salary. And that's what's in the resolution that was adopted, I believe, in '08? Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
So, in '08, the item that was before the city council then was simply setting the salary at $110,000. And then that is what is documented in the resolution. I share, and I don't want to steal Council President's words, but I share in, in the question of if he's eligible and absent any documentation or agreement that prevents him from accepting that benefit, I'm just questioning a little again, why is this even here? To me, there is nothing in front of us that says the council resolved that he was not eligible for this benefit. And the memo from the mayor is great, but we all know that we deliberate a lot on the floor. We have lots of discussions. And what was written on, actually, on 12/10, which was five days after the resolution? The resolution is dated December 5th, so I don't know. I don't believe the memo is part of the official document of the city, the official record. And I know that the council body adopted his salary. And I wonder why, why this is even here.
All right, thank you, Councilman Abraham. Councilman Hamud?
I have one, I have one comment on this which goes to one of the requests for information from corporate counsel was whether Chief Hadad looked into whether he would qualify under city of Detroit benefits? And the answer was, he has not been able to determine if he is eligible for the new program that they're doing for the people who lost their healthcare from city of Detroit. So, to me, that just wasn't a satisfactory answer as to whether he looked to see if he had another remedy before coming back to the city of Dearborn and threatening to sue the city if we didn't accede to his demands for PTO, which we already, I believe, gave him money as part of his, the normal, was it 500 hours?
As permitted by the charter.
As permitted by the charter. So, we already gave him money when he left for his existing PTO. He's asking for more. And then on top of it, if we don't basically settle on this, you know, then we're going to go into litigation, which I don't want to burden Jeremy with more litigation. But this is one of those things where, you know, I don't know that he's necessarily looked into all of his options before coming back to the city of Dearborn as a post-retiree and asking us to give him this benefit kind of through a council resolution. So, I think that just struck me as odd that he wouldn't have explored his other legal options prior to coming and requesting more money from the taxpayers of Dearborn.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments by my colleagues? Any comments from?
Council President, could I just add one thing?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Romer.
So, the demand by Chief Hadad wasn't limited to just the retiree healthcare. I appreciate you looking at that point and isolating it in the memo. But the demand was for payment of bank time associated under 6.8 of the city charter, which is part of that resolution that you read. There's a blurb from 6.8 that says all benefits. It's in every one of them set by the directors. So, when we isolate that one component of retiree healthcare, I can understand and appreciate that on its own, it's just in the memo and not in the, in the council resolution. But his demand is more than just the retiree healthcare. That's just what I'm recommending, that it be settled that. His demand is more expansive and falls under 6.8 of the charter, which is in your resolution. So, I just wanted to be clear, while I'm recommending one thing, his demand is entirely different, which is why it's before you.
Correct, Mr. Counsel, Mr. Romer, also that this resolution, if it, if it was to pass, would be all-encompassing and resolve all the issues at the time. Is that correct?
Yes, subject to a complete waiver and release.
Absolutely. Councilman Hamud, did you have a follow-up or you got?
Well, I would just say that assuming that he accedes to what we give him now.
Yeah, that's what I, but that's what we're trying to say. This action will only happen if there's a release on all claims.
Correct.
Okay, just want to make sure everybody understands it. Any other comments or questions from my colleagues?
Oh, I have one quick question.
Council, Councilwoman Herrick.
The other request is for a retirement card. What is, what is that card? What does it entitle him to?
It's more of a personal effect. It just, it's a, all of our police officers get it when they leave service. He just, that was a request made by Chief Hadad since it was, I viewed it as a non-economic item. I didn't believe there was any issue with doing that.
I appreciate the response. My understanding is that it has not been issued to every retiree, and it actually was denied to those, some who asked for it in the past.
I can only speak to what I've been told, and Chief Hadad would have been the chief. So, if he denied it, I mean, I guess that was what he did. I, my understanding is they're supposed to all get it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have the same understanding as Councilwoman Herrick, that there was a certain limit on how many years of service as well.
I understand. Mr. Romer, does the retirement card have any, any perk to it besides the symbolic aspect to it?
No.
Okay, just want to make sure we get that out of the way.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, any other questions from anyone in the audience on this item? Okay, sir, would you like to come forward, state your name and address for the record?
Hi, my name is Rick Crusek, 4905 Middlesex. To me, as a citizen, it shouldn't matter how many years' service that an officer or first responder dedicates their life to protecting us and our city as a whole. When they put a badge on, whether it's a fireman or a policeman, they put their life on the line. And regardless of whether Chief Hadad had, did not want the retirement at the time, I feel that every minute that any officer or police, fireman[1690.25] feel that every minute that any officer or police, or fireman comes to work not knowing if they're going to go home, 100% home, I think they should get whatever benefits each every first responder should get, regardless of how many years they went to the city or their age. They put their life on the line for us and they don't get paid enough, just like the teachers. So, my position is, as a citizen, this should not have been on the agenda, but even though he, you know, did not take it, he should still get it, period.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other people from the audience? Okay, anybody from the, member of the audience like to come up, state your name and address for the record?
I'm a Dearborn resident. Just a couple of questions, I guess. I, I know he's, or at least requesting the retirement healthcare benefit. And then I think Councilman Hamud, you mentioned that he also requested 500 of PTOs in addition to an additional bank of benefits.
More than that.
Can you clarify on that?
So, I mean, I can read.
There was other demands, I can, I can, there was other demands that this, this motion right here, the shalies to sever, all those demands are only agreed to this, this part at all, at all, in its entirety, that's it.
Okay, and if granted the retirement healthcare benefit, does that give him the right to?
No.
Litigate all the others?
No, that, that's what we asked just before, is that it would, I don't know if you were in the hallway, but we asked that. This is severing all claims in, in relation to that, is that right, Mr. Romer?
Yes, he's waiving his demands with all other claims and then executing a complete waiver and release if afforded retiree healthcare.
Okay.
And the card.
All right, thank you.
And their card.
Yeah, thank you. Any other comments or questions from the public?
Yeah.
Okay, Councilman Hamud?
So, I'd, I'd like to motion to strike the retirement card off of it if he wants the healthcare, if that's no problem with.
Well, you have to, we have to go through the process.
That's fine, no problem.
You have to get a support and we got to get four votes. I mean, I honestly, I think it's, that's up to you, so.
It's a motion.
Okay, so you're asking?
A motion to sever.
Yeah, absolutely, you have, do we have a support to sever that portion and remove the retirement no value card off of the resolution? Anybody like to support that? Okay, so hearing none, that, that does not have a support, would you like to, let's make that a roll call, so we'll make it stay a little longer tonight. Can we have a roll call vote on this item?
Well, thank you.
Roll call vote.
So, we're having a roll call vote on the item itself?
Yes, there was no support for severing that aspect, so we're going to stay on the topic and go with the vote on this as, roll call vote.
Okay, we'll start with Council, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Herrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Seri, Council President Serini?
Yes.
Councilman Hamud?
Yes.
Councilman Abraham?
Yes.
Councilman Paris?
Yes.
Councilman Elsoafi?
Yes.
Seven yeas, the resolution passes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. I'm going to ask my colleagues in the interest of time and the mayor would like to present a citation, I would like if we could get a motion to suspend the rules again.
Offered for more by Councilman Abraham and supported by Councilman Elsoafi to suspend the rules.
Mayor, it's my understanding that you have a good story to follow up the last item and you'd like to bring that forward, Chief?
If I may, I'm allowed Chief Murray to come to the podium and make the presentation.
Good evening, Council, thank you. A few days ago, I was made aware of an incident that I informed the mayor about, two city employees that did a rather heroic act and the mayor was adamant that we had to recognize these employees for their great work and suggested we bring it to the council and make sure the council was aware as well, as well as the public. So, these are two Recreation Department employees, I know we have Director Fletcher here, as well as Teddy Shasco from the Ford Performing Community Arts Center. So, on March 17th, around 11 o'clock in the morning, 84-year-old male resident was swimming in the pool at the Community Performing Arts Center. While he was swimming, he had a cardiac emergency, wound up having a cardiac emergency, flipping over, sinking to the bottom of the pool. At that time, a young lady by the name of Nicole McLean, who was a lifeguard on duty, jumped into the water and retrieved this man, raised him out of the water and getting him to the side of the, of the pool, bringing him out of the water. Once this gentleman was out of the water, another lifeguard by the name of Nadine Knaffler sprung into action and immediately started CPR on this gentleman. The Fire Department 911 was obviously called and the Fire Department arrived and the patient actually went from being unresponsive in the pool to, because of the actions of these two young ladies, was actually somewhat responsive when the Fire Department got there. The patient was treated by EMS, ALS procedures were implemented, were taken to the emergency room. He was conscious at that time, but still having some issues. But I am happy to say that the, the patient did, in fact, we, we had spoken with the hospital and he did in fact have a cardiac-related emergency in the pool. It is the opinion of myself, as well as the crews that were on scene, that if it wasn't for the actions of these two ladies, the outcome would probably not have been very good for this gentleman. So, we firmly believe that these two ladies and their quick action saved the life of this gentleman. We were told by the hospital that this gentleman was discharged from the hospital on Sunday and is doing much better. So, if we, if you allow me to call up Nicole and Nadine?
Absolutely.
We'd like to present them with some.
Absolutely.
So, this is the Dearborn.
Yeah, stay right here, stay right here, ladies, we're going to.
All right. Can we take a group picture?
Yeah, we're going to take a group picture.
What if we came to the floor, is that okay?
Yes, we'll go to the floor, absolutely.
Let's go to the floor, get a quick photo here with these. Sure.
Who's in the back?
Teddy.
I'm in the back.
Teddy.
Teddy. Ready? Hold up.
All right, where are we looking?
Big cheese.
Sue, make us look good.
And a lot more. Can I saw you on your tip? So. Absolutely. Trying to grow hair today.
Excellent.
So, Council President, if I could, I just wanted to make mention real quick.
Yes.
Just to let you know that I've been chief for nine and a half years now and this is only the third and fourth of these citizen lifesaving awards that we have given out. So, this is a very, seldom that we give these awards out, we give them out for truly heroic situations only. So, I also have two of our civilian lifesaving ribbons for these young ladies and everybody's favorite, Dearborn Fire Chief, 10th Fire Chief, Dearborn.
I know, we're working on that all the council.
10th Fire Chief at Dearborn, challenge coins for these ladies. And again, I just want to thank them for their heroic actions that just saved the life of one of our residents, so.
Thank you, Mayor. And police, and fire chief, thank you.
And if I can plug in, if you want to be a lifeguard, we have some postings online. We need some lifeguards to join our team, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We will return to the normal course of visit. We have someone from the public like to speak on this real quick, this special event.
First of all, I'd want to congratulate them.
Your name, sir?
This is actually their, their duty. Just as a thank you, I'd like to give.
We need your name.
Mike Hashem. I'd like to give a $200 gift card to each person.
Oh, that's great.
That saved the person.
Thank you, Mr. Hashem.
Thank you, Mr. Hashem. We always appreciate your support and you can see the fire chief on that, thank you. All right, any other comments on this? Thank you very much, Mayor, for recognizing them and Chief for that award as well. And Mr. Hashem, thank you for your kindness, well appreciated. Mr. Clerk, can we go to the next item?
Item 21, resolution by Councilmembers Hamud and Herrick authorizing to waive certain regulations in the Code of Ordinances that govern outdoor dining and hours of operations to support brick and mortar restaurants during Ramadan and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, the city seeks to support existing brick and mortar restaurants during the holy month of Ramadan and should, should they desire to provide or expand existing outdoor seating, it is recommended that the city council waive by resolution certain regulations found within the city code of ordinances and zoning ordinance as well, that govern the outdoor hours of operation for certain businesses to support this effort. The resolution seeks to establish the following temporary regulations that would expire May 5th, 2022, this year. First of all, allow the existing restaurants to provide or expand outdoor dining commencing April 1st between hours of 7:00 AM and 3:00 PM as well. To permit outdoor dining and for coffee shops to also operate between the hours of 7:00 AM and 3:00 AM. And to permit smoking lounges to operate in the hours between 10:00 AM and 3:00 AM. This application process will be coordinated with the Economic Development Department and will allow for the same process as Section 7.02 of the city's ordinances. Immediate effect is being requested as Ramadan is setting to begin at the end of this week. Any questions or comments on this item? Councilman Elsoafi.
Yeah, this is for the mayor. Can you speak to a little bit to the pop-ups and some of the nuisances that might come along with that and how you plan to curb those?
Yeah, thank you so much for that question, Councilman. The resolution before you is strictly for brick and mortar, does not apply to pop-ups. For any pop-ups that would like to operate within the city of Dearborn, they must receive the appropriate, I'm sorry, I'm chewing on a mint that Councilman Paris gave me.
That's okay.
You must come through the process through Economic Development in order to receive a city permit and licensure, as well as Wayne County Public Health Department. That is the only means of your ability to operate as a pop-up and we will have strict enforcement of our police officers and inspectors who will go through for any pop-ups that come up that do not have the appropriate licensure or permitting.
Perfect, thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments on this? Councilwoman Herrick?
Just to add to that, because we were talking about pop-ups, as well as food trucks need to go through that process with the county.
Correct, for food trucks to operate, they must also have the Wayne County permit, as well as the city licensure as well.
Thank you.
Correct. Okay, any other comments or questions on this item? Okay, hearing and seeing none, unanimous, we'll be attached, next item, please.
Item 22, resolution by Councilmembers Elsoafi and Burns approving the request of the Friends for Animals of Metro Detroit to conduct the 17th Annual Mutt Strut and Pet Expo on Saturday, May 21st, 2022, from approximately 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM, located at the Mary and Wright Animal Adoption Center, subject to all applicable ordinances and the rules and regulations of the Police Department and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, the Friends of Animals of Detroit are seeking to, for council approval to conduct their 17th Annual Mutt Strut and, and Pet Expo on Saturday, May 21st, 2022, from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM, subject to all applicable ordinances, rules and regulations of the Dearborn Police Department. This will mark a return after a two-year hiatus due to COVID-19 and floodings that canceled the event. Friends of the Animal Shelter is a community-wide animal celebration and event that poses, that is the purpose for fundraising for homeless animals. The event is, is going to be conducted this year at the Mary Anne Wright Animal Adoption Center, which is a new location in our city main campus, and is expected to attract approximately 1,000-plus participants and their dogs and pets. This year's event will include the following activities, a pledged driven dog walk beginning at 8:00 AM, a registration tent and a variety of vendors, picnic tables, food trucks and various structured dog demonstration activities. All participants in the dog walk will be restricted to utilize the sidewalks only. And the Friends of Animals of Detroit was also asking for the city to waive all permits, fees, tents, electrical and all other merchandise permits and recreation, and other assistance from the Recreation and Parks Department, as well as the public works, public works and facilities, as well as our Police Department assistance as well. The application, the applicable departments acknowledge that they are familiar with all the details in conjunction with this event and have no objections to or concerns regarding this, as this has been happening for many years, it was just offered a couple. Any questions or comments on this item?
I have a question.
Yes, Councilwoman Herrick.
I thought we were asking this at the committee of the whole and I apologize if the information was provided. Is there an estimate of the total cost of all the permit fees and the expenses that are being waived for the Mutt Strut?
Think we have?
Director Hawkins.
Director Hawkins is going to speak to that item?
Yes, the permit fee that would be required would be a temporary structure for the tent set up at the end. It would be minimal, $120, something along those lines. If they have generators, things like that, it'd be an additional 120.
There would, there would be additional costs as well as it pertains to policing and such, that's typically about $75 per hour. What I would say to the council is, there have been commitments made by the previous administration to some nonprofits on waiving of all costs. I think what it does, and some, a resident approached me last time, you create an imbalance that you treat some nonprofits where they have no fees and some nonprofits where there's a nonprofit rate. I think we're just trying to honor the commitments that were given under the previous administration, but I think we're working with our Parks and Rec Department, as well as our DPW facilities and Economic Development, to have fees that will be levied to at least cover the costs of the city, because we don't think it's fair that you will pick and choose which nonprofits will have fees waived and which nonprofits will not. I think a prime example is the Ramadan Foods Festival is not getting any fees waived. They're paying outright for policing, outright for all the permitting, the background checks and so on and so forth, yet for this nonprofit that's before us, the fees are waived. Festival of Trees fees are waived. And so, I, I think we get into a dilemma then, who are we picking and choosing? And so, I think after just honoring the commitments that were made, I think we want to move forward with a strict nonprofit fee schedule.
Absolutely.
That will apply to all.
Thank you, that's where I was going with the question. As much as we deeply appreciate the work of the Dearborn, or the Metro.
Detroit.
Friends of Metro Detroit Animal Shelter, we need to make sure that we're treating equitably, so, thank you.
Mayor, thank you. I did, I did raise that, Councilwoman Herrick, as you indicated, on the committee of the whole, because there is an imbalance and there is a significant amount of resources that are used. And I think what happened, Mayor, just for background, is the cost that Friends of Animal Detroit were doing for us was at a reduced cost in the years past because of our relationship with them over the years. But they have, you know, since changed their name and since believe that they have a reach that's much farther, but yet they're still doing their events here in the city of Dearborn. So, I appreciate that, as well as their drives in the street that they do. But I do believe that I am in support, as Councilwoman Herrick has indicated as well, that we have a balance-free structure for nonprofits. And Mayor, hopefully you could bring this forward, because we do need to have a consistent basis for all, all of these, so that not winner, we're picking winners and losers. Councilman Elsoafi.
Thank you, Council President. I truly believe that a city's moral progress is measured by how well it treats its animals. So, I just want to thank the Friends for Animals of Metro Detroit for helping shape a city that cares about all its residents, including the furry ones. And I know this is an exciting event for you, for this organization, it's one of their biggest fundraisers of the year, so we're excited to support you here. And I know we have Sarah from, from the Friends, I got to say, I love everything you guys do, except your name, you got to put Dearborn in there.
That's right.
Hi, so I'm Sarah Rude, I'm our Director of Marketing and Development at Friends for Animals of Metro Detroit. And like you've said, we were on a two-year hiatus, we had a virtual because of COVID and then unfortunately Ford Field was too flooded for rescues last year. So, that is one of the reasons we wanted to look to actually using our adoption center. We also have this gorgeous adoption facility that, you know, was built a couple of years ago. We want people to be able to come in and see our facility, learn about us. We're surprised at, you know, how many people aren't aware what the brightly colored building behind the police station actually is, so we want to help with that. And then just mentioned too, that it is May 21st, like we said, it is our biggest fundraiser, we encourage people to participate, to crowd raise, to fundraise themselves, you know, start a team, help us take care of our animals. And not only does the money go to actually care for the animals that we have, but it also goes to our programs. We have programs like Read to Rover, where elementary school kids can practice their reading with an animal. And we also have our Feed Fido Food Pantry for members of the community. And we have done four free microchip and vaccine clinics that benefit our city members, as well as those of the city of Detroit, because of who we partner with. And with those, we've vaccinated and microchipped over 1,000 animals and that's just since last October. So, not only are we helping the animals that come to us, we're also helping our city members be able to take care of their animals, have healthy animals, and in the chance that these animals do come to us, that microchip will lead us back to them. So, just want to encourage everyone to sponsor if you can, to register, to come see us that day, and you can check out our website at famdmuttstrut.org.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any other comments from my colleagues? Any from the public? Okay, unanimous, we'll be attached. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Do I have to say my name again?
Yes.
Okay. My name's Eliana Hussain, I live at 3535 Syracuse Street. I attended the committee of the whole meeting last Thursday on March 17th, when the resolution was brought off. In my understanding of for this event, all permitting fees will be waived. They're borrowing equipment of staging, sound truck systems, tables, chairs, golf carts, et cetera, from the Recreation Department. First of all, obviously, that's amazing. Because of these waivers, more money will be donated to their cause and they can further their agenda of maintaining to operate the Mary Anne Wright Animal Adoption Center. From further discussion, just like Mayor Hamud just brought up, it was said that the Festival of Trees, which is also not a city event, gets to use the Lincoln Ballroom and the Ford Community and Performing Arts Center for free. I appreciate that past administrations have allowed this to occur, however, more nonprofits need to know that there's a chance of them being able to have events on city property at a lower cost. For example, I just held the Charity Talent Show at the Ford Community and Performing Arts Center on March 8th, and I can tell you that the costs outweighed how much we raised by a lot, because of the inflation rate, which I can understand, but if I didn't have to pay as much to the Ford Community and Performing Arts Center, more money would have gone to the foundation we were raising money for. I understand that tech and rental of it is a big cost and something like that can't be free. However, the rental of the theater alone is $2,500 for a nonprofit. It wasn't much of a discount from the original price, I can tell you that. I haven't even received the final bill from the center of the event and then it was two weeks ago exactly from today. I paid only estimated costs of $5,000 so far.
Do I have to say my name again?
Yes.
Okay. My name's Eliana Hussain. I live at 3535 Syracuse Street. I attended the Committee of the Whole meeting last Thursday on March 17, when the resolution was brought off. In my understanding of for this event, all permitting fees will be waived. They're borrowing equipment of staging, sound truck systems, tables, chairs, golf carts, et cetera, from the Recreation Department. First of all, obviously, that's amazing. Because of these waivers, more money will be donated to their cause, and they can further their agenda of maintaining to operate the Mary Anne Wright Animal Adoption Center. From further discussion, just like Mayor Hamud just brought up, it was said that the Festival of Trees, which is also not a city event, gets to use the Lincoln Ballroom and the Ford Community Performing Arts Center for free. I appreciate that past administrations have allowed this to occur. However, more nonprofits need to know that there's a chance of them being able to have events on city property at a lower cost. For example, I just held the Charity Talent Show at the Ford Community Performing Arts Center on March 8, and I can tell you that the costs outweighed how much we raised by a lot, because of the inflation rate, which I can understand, but if I didn't have to pay as much to the Ford Community Performing Arts Center, more money would have gone to the foundation we were raising money for. I understand that tech and rental of it is a big cost, and something like that can't be free. However, the rental of the theater alone is $2,500 for a nonprofit. It wasn't much of a discount from the original price, I can tell you that. I haven't even received the final bill from the center of the event, and it was two weeks ago exactly from today. I paid only estimated costs of $5,000 so far, and I'm excited to see what else I have to pay. An example of costs I can give you, the projector alone was $650, which two people fought over how much it actually was, nobody knew. After use of two mics, any additional mics are $45 each. Two tables are skirted for free, any after that are $15 each. Another amazing thing is that the Wi-Fi does not work in the theater. That head tech person, Brian, told me that three hours before the doors were to open to guests, that it doesn't work, and that he actually put it on his wish list for the internet to be fixed to the department. He was having trouble with uploading audio to his system because of the Wi-Fi, which delayed our rehearsal by an hour and a half. In addition, the person I brought to go live on Facebook during the event had to stop the live because the Wi-Fi was not working. I understand that going forward, the current administration wants to have a flat rate for all nonprofits and any events going forward on city property. I just want to bring a light to the many nonprofits that don't realize how much they can reduce their costs and instead have more money for the amazing work they plan to do, especially in light of the increase in prices when buying anything now, which I'm sure you can see outside with the gas and everything. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. What I will add is, if you ever look at the fee schedule that's provided by the Parks and Rec Department, that I was inherited from the previous administrations, it's very intense. There's a price structure for absolutely everything, and so we're trying to simplify this process, working with the new director, Sean Fletcher, and so we hope to have a new fee schedule fairly soon.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Thank you for your comments from the floor. Any other question or comments on this item? Hearing and seeing none, unanimous, we'll be attached. Next item.
Item 23, resolution by council members Hamud and Herrick, authorizing the Finance Director to recognize and appropriate a donation in the amount of $5,000 from the Ford Motor Company Fund for the Dearborn Youth Theater Program, and requesting immediate effect.
All right, so the Dearborn Youth Theater Program is an essential service of the Recreation and Parks Department, and has been committed to furthering the art of theater in the Dearborn community for the past 50 years. The program encourages children from the age of between six and 18 years old to build confidence and creativity. A generous donation in the amount of $5,000 was made by the Ford Motor Company Fund to the Dearborn Community Fund with the purpose of being recognized and appropriated for the youth theater program. It is requested that the Finance Director be authorized to recognize and appropriate the donation as such. Any questions or comments on this item? Councilwoman Herrick?
Just that the Dearborn Youth Theater Program is second to none, and I wanted to commend the theater staff and Rashid Badun, the Director of the Youth Theater Program, on their wonderful production of Moana this past weekend. It was astounding how wonderfully it was done, but it was not an exception, because they've done that with numerous productions in the past, and I'm looking forward to a strong program going forward, thanks in part to Ford Motor Company Fund.
Excellent, absolutely. Any other comments or questions from my colleagues or from any of from the public? Okay, hearing and seeing none, unanimous, we'll be attached. Next item.
Item 24, resolution by council members Serini and Hamud, concurring in the appointment of Tarek Al-Kadre to the West Dearborn Downtown Development Authority for a term ending June 30th, 2023, and requesting immediate effect.
All right, thank you. So the next, from item 24 to 23, are several appointments. I wanted to thank all the appointees for serving on these volunteer boards, which are no compensation to them, and I wanted to just make note and thank the mayor as well for, these appointees, out of all of them, there are none of them are reappointments, they're all new people, and I know that you had, Mayor, a portal for applications, if you'd like to speak to that as well.
Yeah, thank you so much, Council President. We took a different approach in trying to publicize the openings on the various committees, also coordinating through the various neighborhood associations. We also have created an email where people can submit their resume, as well as the completed form, indicating which committee they would like to, or board they'd like to participate in. Additionally, we took a step further. Rather than just appointing individuals that we may or may not know, we're also having conversations and interviews with many of these individuals, because many of these committees are very powerful, and so we want to make sure that we have individuals that understand the roles and responsibilities that they're going to assume, and that we're moving in a direction that the administration sees fit.
I really appreciate that, Mayor. I think the process was fair and equitable, and I know that you had input from all over, so I do appreciate it. Councilwoman Paris?
Thank you, Council President. If I could, Mayor, I did check with a couple of people that I know that were some of the nominees here that are before us, and I do want to make mention, too, that they did go through an interview process, and I do commend the administration for going a step further to go ahead in inclusiveness and bringing people, you know, that are qualified for these positions, so thank you.
Thank you so much, and I'll thank the interview committee, which was our Chief Operating Officer, Amanda McClanahan, Chief of Staff, Zainab Hussain, and some other members of the administration, depending on the committee. I actually sat myself out, because I know many of the individuals, and I wanted the team to be objective based on who they spoke with, and they provided their recommendation.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm going to go through these appointments relatively quickly, but I know there are some people here from the audience that are appointees. Please come forward, we'd like to meet you and welcome you aboard. So the first one, Mr. Clerk had indicated, Mr. Al-Kadre is a longtime resident of the city of Dearborn and has many properties in the West Dearborn downtown area, so I'd like to thank him for taking his time to serve on this board. Is there any questions or comments on the first item?
I just have a comment, just in general, and I appreciate all the comments that were made about improving the process. I still understand, I wasn't here Thursday, that there was a hiccup in getting these items to us on time, and I hope we continue to see improvement in that area. I know it's a lot, but nine items, you know, coming late, in fairness to not just the council, but the public, I think it's important that all these items get posted on time.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from my colleagues? Okay. Hearing and seeing no questions or comments on this item, unanimous, we'll be attached. Next item, please.
Item 25, resolution by council members Burns and Herrick, concurring in the appointment of Patricia Johnson to the City Beautiful Commission for a term ending June 30th, 2024, and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, and again, we would like to thank Patricia Johnson for her service, willing to serve our City Beautiful Commission, which I believe is a very, very important commission in the city of Dearborn. I subscribe to clean streets, clean homes, and I think it makes our city look wonderful, and the ones that do subscribe to it, I know the City Beautiful Commission does a lot of good work, so. You were on the City Beautiful Commission, right? Our Council President, Pearl Temple, was on the City Beautiful Commission.
Yes, for several years.
Several years, so it's a very big part of our city, so I'd like to thank her. If there's any comments or questions on this item? Hearing and seeing none, unanimous, we'll be attached. Next item.
Item 26, resolution by council members Paris and Burns, concurring in the appointment of Janet Damian to the City Beautiful Commission for a term ending June 30th, 2024, and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, we, again, would like to thank Mrs. Damian for her service for the City Beautiful Commission. Any questions or comments on this item? Hearing and seeing none, unanimous, we'll be attached. Next item.
Item 27, resolution by council members Herrick and Burns, concurring in the appointment of Janet Schultz to the Senior Citizen Commission for a term ending June 30th, 2024, and requesting immediate effect.
And again, we'd like to thank Mrs. Schultz. The Senior Citizens Commission is, again, a vital part of our community, and I'd like to thank her for serving on this board. Any questions or comments on this item? Seeing, hearing, and unanimous, we'll be attached. Next item.
Item 28, resolution by council members Paris and Al-Sawafi, concurring in the appointment of Mona Al-Awee to the Disability Concerns Commission for a term ending June 30th, 2024, and requesting immediate effect. And she's here.
Is she here? Okay, great. I'd like her to come and speak. So I do appreciate this as well, Mayor, because, I'll be honest with you, I don't remember under my time, maybe someone else could speak, maybe Council Abraham could, of seeing this. There was questions from many residents, do we have a disability board? I knew there was one, but I haven't seen the appointment in a long time, so I really appreciate that she's, I believe, filling a vacancy. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so thank you very much, ma'am. Would you like to speak?
Thank you. Good evening to Councilman and to Mayor. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm very excited. I've been an advocate throughout the community, so this is just gonna help me do more, hopefully, and provide more inclusion for the residents of this city.
If I may ask, Mona, can we speak to the events that we have coming up and some of the work you've already done with the city?
Thank you. Yes, we do have an upcoming event Saturday. Yep. We've been in partnership with the Police Department and the Fire Department and the city. We're going to be providing, it's kind of more targeted towards parents, so we're going to be, and the Dearborn schools, we're going to have representatives from all the entities present to inform the community of all the training and protocols and efforts that all the departments are doing to provide assistance for individuals with special needs. We're also, April's Autism Awareness Month, so we are also going to Go Blue. We're going to have the Centennial Library and Police Station, and then other buildings around Dearborn Go Blue, and we have lawn signs, and we were happy to have them both in Arabic and in English this year, that says Autism Awareness Month. We're also going to have light bulbs present so that residents can take them and light their home blue as well.
Excellent, Mona.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Al-Awee, I really appreciate you coming forward and taking initiative on this. I believe this is an underserved part of our community, and we do need to do that. Councilwoman Herrick?
Thank you, Ms. Al-Awee, for joining the commission. I've been to a couple of the meetings before and then one after COVID, and very dedicated group of individuals, but we definitely needed more input from more citizens, so thank you for joining the commission.
Thank you, thank you.
Just one quick question. The event on Saturday, who is invited? Where is it being held? What time?
Everyone, I believe, we did send an invite to all the council. You should have received that, I think, last week. There was a Google invite sent to all councilmen, council, everyone's invited. It's a public event, all are welcome, so.
At the Performing Arts Center?
Yes, it's at, I'm sorry, it's at the police station in the parking lot. We want, usually our event for Autism Awareness Month is indoors in one of the schools, but because of COVID, we wanted to still be mindful, because we usually start planning months in advance, and back in January, the numbers were sky high, so we wanted to be safe, and we went with an outdoor event this year. Yes, it will be at 6:30. It'll be at 6:30, and it'll be about an hour, an hour-long event, so we hope to see everyone there.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're super excited to have her here, and I would also just like to recognize that I think her family is here as well.
Yeah, there's a few.
So thank you so much, but she's a great addition to the committee.
Thank you guys so much. I appreciate it. Any other further comments or question on this item? Hearing and seeing none, unanimous, we'll be attached. Next item, please.
Item 29, resolution by council members Serini and Al-Sawafi, concurring in the appointment of Kimberly Ishmael to the Dearborn Historical Commission for a term ending June 30th, 2024, and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, again, I'd like to thank Mrs. Ishmael, who's a longtime resident of Dearborn, to serve on this historical commission. I appreciate her willingness to serve. Any questions or comments on this item?
Is there anything she doesn't do?
Yeah, I know. That's, that is true. Hearing, seeing no comments or questions further, unanimous, we'll be attached. Next item, please.
Item 30, resolution by council members Al-Sawafi and Herrick, concurring in the appointment of Mahdi Yusuf Abdullah to the Planning Commission for a term ending June 30th, 2024, and requesting immediate effect.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. You did pretty well on the name, but it's Mahdi, but it's pretty good. Mahdi Yusuf Abdullah, very well-known community member and young lawyer. I really appreciate you coming to the Planning Commission, as the mayor has indicated, a very important job on the city that affects many people's lives. So thank you for being here tonight. Maybe you get to speak for a moment on yourself.
Thank you. I do first want to thank the mayor for the appointment and the council for taking the time to consider my appointment as well. I want to thank the interview committee for taking the time to interview me as well. I know they had to go through a lot of those interviews, so I appreciate that time, and I've been through a lot of interviews and a lot of questions in the courtroom, and that was a tough interview, so I'll commend them on that. I look forward to serving the community that raised me. I don't want to take up too much of the council and mayor's time. I know we've had a long night already, so I'm happy to answer any questions anyone might have, but otherwise I'll.
Just, Mr. Abdullah, just for us, I know you have an extent, because I know you, I want my colleagues to understand, you have an extremely extensive background in real estate and your family.
Yeah, my father's been a realtor in the Dearborn area since the eighties. Growing up, I actually was showing houses since I was a teenager with him, so I understand the real estate industry in Dearborn particularly, and that understanding has only gotten greater through my practice of law, and I look forward to applying my skill sets to the Planning Commission to help better serve the city.
Absolutely, and just for the knowledge, how many years have you been practicing now in law?
About seven years.
Yeah. Thank you very much for your willingness to serve, and thank you for coming here tonight to show the fact that you do appreciate the appointment, and we do appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mahdi.
Welcome, thank you.
All right, hearing, seeing, do we have any other comments or question on this item? Hearing and seeing none, unanimous, we'll be attached. Thank you, and next item, please.
Item 31, resolution by council members Al-Sawafi and Herrick, concurring in the appointment of Abdellou Yafi in the Planning Commission for the term ending June 30th, 2024, and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, again, we'd like to thank Mr. Yafi, how do you pronounce that?
Abdellou Yafi.
Abdellou Yafi.
Abdellou Yafi, yep.
Yafi. Well, thank you for being here, and would you like to speak a little bit on this appointment as well?
Yeah, good evening. I want to thank Mayor Hamud for the nomination. I've been in Dearborn for over 25 years. I have three children. Been a long night, I'm like half asleep. I usually go to sleep with my three kids at nine o'clock, so I appreciate, I look forward to serving the Dearborn residents. I have a very solid background as a planning engineer down in the downtown area for DTE Energy, and also managing one of the biggest programs in DTE, which is the pole top maintenance, approximately 35 million plus, and currently on a massive project for the Ford Land, which is the Michigan train station as well. So I have a very good background as an engineer and also as a licensed builder to bring diversity to the team and to also assist and serve the Dearborn residents as well.
Well, Mr. Yafi, I really appreciate it. I know you've been very active in the community, you've been coming, and I think it's great that you, when the portal opened, that you put that through. I've seen your information come through, and I'm glad the mayor did, and through the interview process, that you were selected, and we really thank you and appreciate it.
Yeah, appreciate it.
And if I made Council President, well, that is, he came on my radar, because this individual, who I did not know, kept coming to council meetings.
That's right.
Speaking to zoning and planning issues.
Lot of stuff to do here.
And so, you know, I think that speaks to this process, that we're being very particular about who we'd also like to apply who haven't traditionally had opportunities, and I think we're getting folks who are traditionally active but really never had a seat at the table, and I'm super excited for Mr. Yafi to join the Planning Commission.
Yes, Councilman Hamud?
Oh, I mean, I don't know if any of my other colleagues.
No, I think you were next.
Oh. I just want to say, I've spoken at length to Mr. Yafi about these specific issues, and as an engineer myself who brings diversity to a board, I really commend you and I appreciate you getting involved, because I know we have very demanding jobs, as is, but, you know, I'm sure you look forward to seeing through more long meetings in the evening, and I really do look, you know, honestly, I really do look forward to your perspective, especially on as important of a commission as planning, because I think that's one of the commissions we know that we're going to see a lot of recommendations that are going to help us alleviate flooding, and so I've actually had extended conversations with Mr. Yafi about things like that, and I think he's going to be an excellent addition when it comes to bringing fact and database assessments to our planning commissions.[1587.15]
Absolutely. Mr. Yafi and Mr. Abdullah, I want to make sure that you make it clear to you two that, make sure that the recommendation of the commission is being heard by the council as well as the recommendation of division, because we had some conflict there. The commission speaks as a member baddie, so we would like to make sure we do hear your recommendation as well as our city planner. But I want to make sure we differentiate between those two, because there was some concern in the past. Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments on this item? Hearing and seeing none, unanimous, we'll be attached. Thank you for your service. Next item, please.
Item number 32, under New Business, resolution by councilmembers Burns and Herrick, proclaiming March 2022 to be the National Women's History Month in the city of Dearborn, also recognizing this year's theme to be providing healing, promoting hope, and encouraging our entire community to commemorate this special observance.
Okay, thank you. And again, this is a national-recognized holiday. I would like to thank the council president, Pro-Tam, Councilwoman Burns, for bringing this forward, along with my colleague, our colleague, Councilwoman Herrick. I'd like to turn over this section to Councilwoman Burns to speak on it.
Thank you, Council President, and also very happy to bring this forward with my colleague, Councilwoman Herrick, as the two ladies on council, and hopefully we'll see more in the future. So, for our 2022 Women's History Month resolution, we'd like to acknowledge that during March 2nd through 8th of the year 1980, President Jimmy Carter declared that week to be National Women's History Week. By 1995, every U.S. president has issued a series of annual proclamations designating the month of March as Women's History Month. The month of March serves to celebrate the achievements and contributions women have made to society over the course of American history. From Susan B. Anthony and Elizabeth Cady Stanton founding the National Women Suffrage Association, to Amelia Earhart, serving as the first woman and second pilot to fly across the Atlantic, to Jeanette Rankin of Montana, the first woman elected to Congress as a member of the House of Representatives, and to Marie Curie, the first woman to receive, thank you, two Nobel Prizes for her work on scientific advancements related to elements of medicine. These women's work, along with countless number of others, have not gone unnoticed. The importance of this month is to not only acknowledge the women in our lives making a difference around the world, but to also give them their thanks. Whether it be taking on a professional role or a family role or both, women have dedicated their talents to all in a variety of fields. We owe them a great deal of gratitude. We also recognize the women working on the front line during the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic and to those across the country who have dedicated their efforts to provide healing and hope to those in need. The 34th Dearborn City Council is committed to making sure that the contributions women have made to our community and country be noted. Be it therefore resolved that the 34th Dearborn City Council proclaim March 22nd to be National Women's History Month in the city of Dearborn. We also recognize this year's theme to be providing healing, promoting hope, and we encourage our entire community to commemorate this special observance. I also want to give a special thanks to our council office team, made up of all women, who helped us prepare this wonderful resolution. Thank you. And thank you and an honor to them as well. I think it's our honor to work with you and to have you as part of our team, so we thank you very much. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Herrick. Did you have some comments? Oh, okay, I just wanted to make sure. But thank you for, for.
Well said, Councilwoman Herrick.
Yeah, for supporting the resolution as well. Any other comments or questions on this item? Hearing and seeing none, unanimous, we'll be attached. Next item, please.
Item number 33, resolution by council president Serini, supported unanimously, offering condolences for the family of Haj Tashin Haj Ahmed De Baja.
Yes, Haj Tashin Haj Ahmed De Baja was born in 1933 in Ben Tishbe, Lebanon, and passed away on Friday, March 18th, 2022. He was the beloved son of the late Haj Ahmed and the late Haji Zainab. He was a beloved husband of the late Haj Yarouf and caring, and a caring father, I'm sorry, of seven children. Haj Juher, Haj Ibrahim, Haj Mahmoud, Haj Bilal, Munna, Samar, and Haj Zainab. Haj Tashin was a beloved father of Haj Ali, Haj Ahmed Hussein, and Haj Alia. As a father of seven children, Haj Tashin supported them while working, while employed at the Port of Lebanon. He and his wife Haj Yarouf immigrated to Dearborn during the Lebanese Civil War to seek a better life and upbringing for their family. Haj Tashin's son is Ibrahim De Baja. He is also one of our Dearborn Police Officers for 34 years, who has worked for three different mayors in the mayor department. His children are all Dearborn residents and are employed by Homeland Security, Dearborn Police, the CVS pharmacies, Henry Ford Health Systems, and our public school systems as well. He was a devoted grandfather and great-grandfather and loved by many of his, by many and all of his grandchildren. He was known as, by many, as being tough, but also independent. Haj Tashin took pride in instilling a great work ethic in his children and grandchildren. His interests were focused on his faith and family, and he was a devoted supporter of civic duty such as voting and community involvement. He was known for his poetry and eloquent speeches at family and community events. He leaves behind a legacy through his family, filled with love, respect, and devotion. Haj Tashin's lifelong dedication to his family, friends, and community has left a mark with residents of the community of Dearborn, and to all, we offer our deepest condolences. Councilwoman Burns.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you for the wonderful commemoration. I didn't have the pleasure of meeting Haj De Baja, but I can say I know his son Abe through his work with the city and have had the pleasure of knowing him for several years now. And he is a wonderful, caring, hard-working human being. I think anyone who's ever met him can attest to that. And I have no doubt that that mentality and just that way of being as a person comes from his parents. And so, I would offer my condolences as well to Abe and all the other family members. I know that he will be missed.
Thank you very much.
If I may, Council President?
Yes, Mayor.
Just to share one story. You know, in the Muslim faith, we have a saying that heaven lies beneath the feet of a mother. And one of Haj Tashin's final request was that when he passes away, he would love to be buried next to his mother. Now, his mother is buried in the village of Ben Tishbe in Lebanon. And it's very difficult in that cemetery to find a plot because of how many people are buried there. Well, after the family searched, they found one plot open at beneath the feet of his mother. And that is where Haj Tashin will actually be laid to rest, as per his request. And I just found that to be profound and godly, frankly. And so, to him, we wish him, you know, we wish his family patience through this difficult time, but knowing that he lived a true and just life. And we see that exemplary in his children, specifically in Haj Ibrahim, who is within the mayor's office, and his children, who I grew up with my entire life.
Absolutely, Mayor. Thank you very much. I do find that profound, and it's just incredible how things do work out when it's meant to be. Any other comments or questions by my colleagues? Okay, unanimous, we'll be attached. Next item, please.
Item 35, this is a walk-on item by councilmember Abraham, offering condolences to the family of Sam Petlikoff, a retired Dearborn Police Officer.
Councilman Abraham.
Thank you. As many of you have known, Sam Petlikoff, he was a retired police officer, Corporal Petlikoff, and he passed away Saturday, we learned. He was almost 98 years old, so he's been in our community a tremendous amount of time. Like I said, he's served over 35 years on our police force. He was a founding member of the Police Officers Association of Dearborn. He was actively involved for decades, supporting our nonprofit groups, the Dearborn Goodfellows, the Dearborn Exchange Club, and our Fortson Varsity Alumni Club. He was the longest-standing board member from its founding membership until he passed on Saturday. I want to send our sincere condolences to his family, his friends, and everybody that he's helped along the way, including all the residents of this city that he served in great, in great fashion as a police officer.
Thank you, Councilman Abraham. Unanimous, we'll be attached. Next item, please.
Nothing further from the clerk's office. Thank you.
Okay, before I open up to my colleagues, just a couple of small things for myself. One, I'd like to wish Mayor Hamud a very happy birthday. Belated, it was on Saturday, but I know you had several events, but I did send you a birthday text.
Thank you. It was more of a, you sent HB.
That's right. All right.
It's a text.
Yeah, I mean, my kids say.
You didn't even get an emoji?
My kids say, no.
My exclamation point.
Don't be too long, they tell me so. It's too long. Congratulations, Mayor. We really appreciate all the hard work you're doing and the dedication, honestly, tremendous dedication, and can't wait to see the budget and how we're going forward, and I appreciate it. I know you're, I know you're doing everything you can, and it's a big task. We really appreciate it, and hope you enjoyed some time with your family over the weekend.
Thank you.
Absolutely. I, I'd like to mention something myself. As many people have seen throughout the eight years or so, I don't really mention anniversaries, birthdays of my family, and so on and so forth, because I don't feel that every resident has the opportunity to do that. Just my take, doesn't mean it shouldn't be. But I hate to sit here tonight and not say what many people have seen on my Facebook posting, but my son, who has been married over, just over a year or so, and his wife, me and my son Hussein, had their first child just two days ago in our great Oakwood Hospital.
Grandpa.
Yeah, so I am a grandpa, or is it though? To a little baby Jena, J-E-N-N-A, because I spelled it wrong, they already reminded me, so. I'll be honest with you, my father, God rest him, as always, had said a saying to me in Arabic, as the mayor had indicated, another aspect, that there's no feeling like the feeling of the love that you have for your child, the child of your child. And it's hard to explain that to a senior. And it's a great, great feeling, and expanding the family is always good, too. So, I wanted to mention that as well. Thank you. Now, open up to the, my colleagues. Any comments from my colleagues? Councilman Paris?
Thank you, Council President. I wanted to bring up first, if, Mr. Hawkins, just a question for you. Thank you very much first for addressing a issue off of Schloth, Michigan Avenue area, in that residential area in regards to DTE having a contractor or DTE being responsible for trimming trees for power lines. Thank you for addressing that, and the residents are extremely thankful for that. But the question that I do have, it's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, I would just like this opportunity to see if residents can be informed exactly what happens when you go ahead and remove tree limbs and branches from the power lines. Who is responsible for picking up the debris that's left in the residential yards? Because we have had that complaint before.
Yeah, that was my mom's backyard, and I know, I know they went out there, I know you did take it, but I'd like to talk about the policy, and I know that our office had asked it. So, if you can.
It is DTE's responsibility. We have contacted them, the same as the house on Lithgow, I believe it was.
Yes.
They came out, and the same as council presidents.
Yeah.
When we contact them, they're using contractors. Those are not DTE employees, and they've had to go back and speak with the contractors to get it picked up.
Yeah, I just, Council Paris, if you don't mind, I'd like to make a mention to that. And as I indicated to Mr. Director Hawkins, my concern was from other residents in my mom's area in the Spring Falls Association, that, as you indicated, the contractors did have the equipment to remove it, chose not to, and almost acted as if they solicited that it was a separate type of contract that they would have to be paid to remove that.
Yeah.
I want to make that abundantly clear, because, you know, DTE, if you see the log size, and I appreciate it, and I know Councilman Paris also had the same thing, but what they cut down was tremendous to leave that for any timeframe at all without you going into it. I know there was a letter sent by, by our liaison, is that correct, regarding this aspect? This issue?
Yeah, we reached out to, are contacted DTE, and they are addressing this with their contractors. Like I said, both issues that were brought forward, they were glad to address them, so we, we are making sure this is covered.
Yeah, and just so that our residents understand, and I think for our council as well, if you do contact them and they don't respond in a timely, expedient fashion, we do have the right to abate that under our nuisance violations and send them the bill for the cost. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Councilman Paris, what?
And the, you're all set, Tim. I do appreciate your perseverance in this and addressing this issue for a resident. I'm all set with you.
Thank you.
The only other question that I wanted to make, or a comment that I wanted to make, and I know it's getting late here, folks, we had a lot of people at this meeting tonight, okay? And we have very few meetings, or we have a lot of meetings, committee of the whole, very few people attend. Not enough people take the interest of being here and being involved in participatory government. This was extremely important issues that were brought up tonight, and we can tell by the overflow crowd here, let alone there's probably a lot of people that have been watching at home. The only thing that I would stress, some questions that were brought up, as an example, just on myself, is to clarify issues, because I take my job very seriously, and I want to serve the public here. And I really, really want to encourage people, either the Charter Commission, we still have the chair that's in the back of the room here, look at these Charter Commission meetings, watch them on TV, watch them on CCTV, watch it on Facebook, or show up in person. Just like a lot of people are still here tonight, there's still 20-some people here. I'm not going to belabor that anymore, but participatory government, this is your council, this is your government, please be involved. Thank you.
Councilman Paris, thank you very much for that comment. I think it's well, well taken. I would temper the watching of the meetings of the Charter Commission, too, because it is a work in progress. You might catch some of the things in, you know, as I've indicated to the Charter Commission, chair change needs to come in small incremental aspects. When you're talking about changing complete fundamental government and taking mayor roles away and taking council presidencies away and having people with families be able to run for office, those are very serious concerns. So, I just, I just want to make sure.
He's coming up.
But I just, I understand, no, no, I understand, but I just want to temper it for someone, hold on, if someone turns that video on and sees it, you're probably not going to get the commission passed, so I hope you have some of this.
Appreciate the feedback. I just, I want to clarify, there's a vast difference between what is being discussed or deliberated, right, versus what people may catch in snippets of moments. And that is the risk we understood and took in deciding to publicize all of our meetings, and I would not change that at any moment, right? As a nine-body commission, I will say that we vastly differ in ideas, backgrounds, skillset and otherwise, much like the council. It is a great effort to try to corral a lot of those ideas and be able to find a central way moving forward, but I want to make clear that the entire first read-through of the charter is simply exploratory in nature. There are provisions being approved, however, and I know I have another commissioner here, Commissioner Hawkins, Dr. Hawkins is here as well, for the most part, they are very immaterial in nature. And what I mean by that is, and I know Corporation Counsel has attended some of those meetings, and now he's abandoning us for other obligations. Jeremy, I had to give him a hard time.
He has a family.
For good reason. Jeremy, but what I will say is, there are a number of provisions in the charter where there were misspellings, grammatical errors, formatting errors, some of the language wasn't aligned with state law. I mean, there's a ton of compliance work related to state law at minimum that needs to be done. Now, to Councilman Paris's continued emphasis on engagement, I have said it at these meetings, I have said it at the council, committee of the whole meetings, I have emailed many of you individually, we've posted it on social media. I cannot tell you how important it is to attend these meetings, get involved. We have a public engagement subcommittee that we are openly taking applications to. Originally, the deadline was tomorrow. We've now lifted that until we fill all six positions. So, Councilman Serini has a point that, yes, I agree that the commission has a job of passing this charter as a whole. You cannot pass this charter in increments of provisions. It's an all-or-nothing effort. And my goal is to ensure that we get as much feedback and engagement as possible and hopefully pass a charter that is in, serving the best interest of the people of Dearborn and that one that reflects the votes of the residents. Ultimately, that's what will happen. It will go to a ballot, it will go to that vote. So, I wouldn't temper people from watching the meetings. I would encourage increased participation in voting and voicing your opinions. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate that, but just a couple of other things I do, and I'd like to make a point of this as well, too. But that, that commission was formed and we did fund it and stuff, and some things that I watched, where a commissioner asked for a name and address of every person that lost their tent, what a reservation, I think, well, let me ask you, how would you handle that? Because to me, that's a waste of city taxpayer money and resources.
Agreed.
I like to know, how does somebody, they want to know the name and address of the person who rented a tent that was denied, that was asked that they.
Sure.
The tent was closed for a year.
So, I'll preface this with saying that what Councilman Seri, Council President Serini is referring to is, a portion of our meetings are, on our agenda, are related to research requests. Essentially, when, at the onset of these, of the commission, we presume that all research requests would be strictly relative to our review or deliberation of issues pertaining to the charter. We have not yet established and adopted rules of order. I will say that in the next coming meeting in April, the rules of order are going to be a main point of issue for the commission. In that, I am one of the individuals who is going to be advocating as long, as well as some of my other commissioners, regarding the relevance of research requests. And I do agree, some of the research requests have been maybe subjective to specific commissioners. And again, I agree that we, I have made sure in every request, and I'm, Corporation Counsel, the city clerk's office can attest to this, that we are very conscious of the amount of effort this takes. We are very conscious of the fact that the administration is in its first quarter of being present, and we do not want to take any unnecessary time away from that. So, feedback well taken, and I will be sure to continue to advocate for the relevance of those items in the charter.
Yeah, I appreciate it, because it is, it is, I'm not sure what preview we have, because they are on their own separate body, but they are using the resources of the city and which is allocated from, from this body.
Correct.
So, I just recommend, because I've heard that they want feedback, as the council president, I believe that you should only ask for research elements that are relative to what you're doing for the charter.
Thank you.
And I do not believe that a name and address of someone that rented a tent is necessary for them to do their job.
Noted.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Council President.
Councilman Hamud.
Just one comment to Chairman Abdullah, Abdullah's qualification. I appreciate that he's in compliance as his background because I think that's going to be a big part of the charter. So we appreciate your service once more.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Any other comments from my colleagues? Councilman El Suafi.
On a more serious note, I'm concerned for the safety of our residents. I think updating the city ordinances to reflect, in regards to reckless driving, to reflect the state penalties, I think it's a step in the right direction. I think it sets the tone that we've had it with reckless drivers in Dearborn. And I know we started a new safety traffic unit, and you know, historically, in the summer, it gets worse. So we want to make sure we have a plan in place because if we wait till the summertime to put a plan and execute, it's going to be too late. So I want to speak to the chief if possible. Tell us more about this new traffic safety unit.
Good evening, council. Eze Shaheen, Chief of Police. So Councilman Suafi, were you interested in our plan as it relates to traffic safety at the moment?
Yeah, just the traffic safety unit, tell us a little bit more about that, some of its roles and responsibilities.
So the traffic safety unit's been in place for several months now, and it consists of three officers and a supervisor, soon to be four officers and a supervisor, April 1st. But Councilman El Suafi, in addition to the traffic unit, starting in March, the entire police department has taken a concerted effort and focused on hazardous moving violations. And I could, I could talk for some time here, so I'll be brief, it's a late hour, but we've gone from focusing on unrelated traffic violations and we're focusing specifically on hazardous moving violations. And I brought a data point that I think is interesting that I could, because I know data is obviously clearly important in benchmarking. If I took March, or excuse me, January 1st of 2021 and compared it to, and went to March 22nd, so January 1st to March 22nd of 2021, in that period of time, when I focused specifically on hazardous moving violations, we wrote 275. If I take the same period of time, March, January 1st of 2022 to March 22nd of 2022, we've written 1,924 hazardous moving violations. So that's an increase of 600%. So I think that kind of demonstrates the way we focus it on hazardous moving violations.
Absolutely, yeah.
But, but Councilman, but I'll be the first to admit, enforcement alone is not going to get us to where we need to be, right? We need to look at education, and so we partnered with the Dearborn Public Schools. As we all remembered, many of us, when we took driver's education, we did it in schools.
That's right.
Right? So I might be the first one to admit, having private companies do your driving school might not be as robust as we might need. So I, council, excuse me, Superintendent Malak is looking at incorporating that back into the schools, which I'm excited about. But in addition to that, public messaging, and then finally, engineering, right? I know Mayor Hamud has got a broad plan to look at speed bumps and other traffic calming measures and might see other communities. So there's a comprehensive plan in place, and I agree with you, with the summer approaching, we need to be ahead of it.
No, and I appreciate all your efforts, chief. I just want to make sure, do you have all the tools necessary that you need to effectively execute this unit?
We're fully equipped, Councilman El Suafi. We have the cars, we have the lighter laser units, and we're ready to take action, so.
If you ever have a wish list, feel free to send out, definitely add me.
I'll keep that in mind.
A wish list? In regards to this traffic safety unit, anything else?
I understand, thank you.
And that, chief?
Sorry, I'm not done here.
Yes. Go ahead, councilman.
And another thing, you know, there's reckless driving, and then there's also the loud vehicles that come with that. If you live on, near a telegraph, it feels like you live near a Speedway. So, you know, what could be done about that?
So in addition to hazardous moving violations, you're, you're absolutely correct. The community has spoken on this issue, loud car exhaust is a problem. And so we've directed our officers to focus on that very issue. And there's a statute, it's actually section 18 dash 164, excessive noise and smoke. And it doesn't require a decibel reading or a distance, it just requires that the noise is annoying. And so if you were to sit at a stop at a red light or an intersection and rev your engine, the statute provides that that can be cited. So our officers have been instructed to take action on that as well.
Excellent.
Yeah. All right, chief, I appreciate you.
Keep it order in there.
I can read the statute for you, but it's 18 dash 164.
Well, I appreciate that, yeah. We also have our ordinance, but.
We've adopted it as an ordinance.
We have an ordinance as well.
Correct, that's, that's our ordinance, Council President.
Okay, excellent. Councilman El Suafi.
No, I'm, you know, city council, we can't fight crimes, but we can provide you with the tools necessary to execute the mission.
Well, you know, in all seriousness, I appreciate the support of not only the community, but the administration and council.
No, absolutely. I think it's a team effort, right? City council, the Dearborn Police and the mayor, it's a team effort to kind of really tackle this top issue in our city.
You know, and I agree with you, the one thing I'd like to add is, you know, we didn't get to this place as a city overnight. It's going to take us some time to get out of it, but I'm confident working together, we can get there.
And, you know, we always kind of bring it back to you, but you mentioned, this is not just enforcement, it's education, it's engineering. So, you know, we'd like to see progress on that end as well, pretty soon.
Absolutely, I, I look forward to it as well.
Thank you for your commitment to the safety of this city.
Absolutely, thank you.
Chief, if you stay, reminding Councilman Abraham.
I just have a follow-up if I could.
Of course.
Thank you for comments. Chief, you mentioned that over 1,000 tickets have been issued in the last 80 days, it sounds like. When tickets like that are issued, hazardous driving, reckless driving, is there a requirement? Because you brought up education, is there a requirement in that process to try and educate those drivers? I'm a little reluctant to think that somebody can just write a check and get back right on the street and their habits aren't going to change.
So, so the education component, Councilman Abraham, could be handled within the courts. You know, we had a driving school, so the judges will look at a driving record many times and, and make accommodations as far as the citation and offer a driving school or traffic school or some other education. So that's kind of where it might lie within the court system.
And if I may, councilman, within the prosecutor's manual administratively, we've met with our prosecutors, obviously in our leadership of our Corporation Council, and spoke with the prosecutors at length about, you know, if this is a first time offender, it's different than somebody who's a repeat offender, where we don't want to provide latitude on the dismissal of ticket and points and things that might be associated with the reckless driving incident.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at the education standpoint, and I think that, that there are some good education programs out there for drivers, especially ones that may not be as responsible as we'd all like them to be on the street and understanding the risk and the hazard they cause to their neighbors and their own family members. I, I think that that is a point of emphasis, and if we can drill that point home, I think that would pay dividends down the road.
And to, to those points, councilman, we agree. I think right now, the way it works is if you have some points based on the ticket, you're actually allowed to opt in to take an educational course to get those points removed. However, if you're a repeat offender, that option is not then provided to you again. You actually get hit with those points and they stick to your record.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then chief, also just to piggyback on this as well, Wayne County, our Wayne County prosecutor also had a meeting with us and the mayor and yourself as well. They also have started to use the, what do you call it? No, I'm sorry, for the Caesar.
Forfeiture?
The forfeiture aspect of the vehicle. So I hope that that's just another tool for you as well, is that correct?
Correct. Forfeiture is on the table for drag racing and other related offenses.
Right. And then chief, I do, since we have you up here, I just wanted to thank you for the press releases we've been seeing. And, you know, I'm, I use Instagram, I'm not big on the TikTok. I know we're going that way. But I understand, I really appreciate that you have been putting out those press releases regarding the things that the younger teenagers are doing that might think are harmless, such as shooting paintballs and so on and so forth. And I know that could be a very, very serious aspect, so maybe you can speak on that for a second.
So if, I, I don't know if any young adults are watching this, but if their parents are, I would be very cautious. Currently, we're dealing with an issue in the city revolving around splat guns, and so it looks like a Nerf gun. And they're, they're designed to hold like almost water soluble pellets that would, you know, dissipate once on contact. But these young adults are putting Orbeez balls in them, which is like a plastic filled ball, but it's, it can be, it hurts when it goes into the gun.
Yeah.
Furthermore, council president, they're putting them in the freezer. And so they're causing welts and injuries when they're, they're shooting them at people and, and property damage as well. Correct. We've had unfortunately in the city in the last several weeks, about 15 incidents. We've made several arrests.
And there's charges as well.
Yeah, they're being charged with, the consequences are very severe. Depending on the injuries, it could be a misdemeanor or felony assault. And so young adults that are out there playing this dangerous game could find themselves with lifelong consequences.
Absolutely, chief, I appreciate that.
Yeah, and I'll just be very clear, the department and the administration is taking a very zero tolerance approach with this. Anybody caught doing something as heinous as this is going to be held accountable.
I appreciate that, chief, and I appreciate the communication to our, to the body, to our, my, to the council and the colleagues and my colleagues. So I wanted to make sure we mentioned to that, and I do appreciate the consistency. I think that most residents in any civil society will be, would, would have no problem when we have a consistent program that's done and done at the same manner at every time. So I really appreciate your efforts on that.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
And if I may, council president.
Yes, mayor.
On, on Thursday, May, March 17th, outside of Custer Co., which was Free Cone Day, we had two individuals, one was driving, one was in the passenger seat, who had a mask on, who drove by and, and shot with his gun at all those individuals that were out, the customers outside of Custer Co. Now, that video has emerged through WhatsApp groups and on social media.
Yes.
And we haven't caught that individual yet. But let's be very clear, we're going to catch who that person is.
Oh, yeah.
And we're going to hold them accountable. And so to all the jackasses out there, we're going to find you because these days, you can post a video, lie about a reckless driving incident, saying a car came at you, you can try to hide the fact that you were out there doing something stupid, but everything is traceable. And so we're working with the community to identify those individuals and bring them in.
Thank you, mayor, appreciate that. Councilwoman Burns.
Thank you. Chief, thank you. I don't have any further questions for you. I know it's like, I just wanted to acknowledge really quickly, I know we're getting into a late hour, I wanted to wish a happy 100th birthday to Thomas Coughlin, who's a local veteran. I know the mayor, Chief Shaheen, and several council members were there over the weekend. His family had a nice kind of drive-through parade for him. They had a tent out, cupcakes, it was lovely. So just wanted to wish him a happy 100th and thank his family for coordinating that event. And I know Councilwoman Herrick mentioned earlier the Dearborn Youth Theater, who put on a fabulous production of Moana. We actually went to see it together with some friends on opening night, and it was wonderful. So just wanted to congratulate all of the youth involved and Rashid Badun as well for helming that production. It was fantastic. Looking forward to seeing what they do next.
Thank you, councilman. Any other comments for my colleagues?
I just have one.
Councilman Abraham?
And I'll be brief. Just so everybody knows, it's sitting out there till 11 o'clock. The council's working on our rules of order, and one of the proposed changes that's been offered and where, is under deliberation, is to move the public participation to the front of the meeting at a certain time so that the public can address this body in an orderly, timely fashion and hopefully not keep you here till 11:30 at night.
Yes.
Absolutely.
And so if you want to line up to the podium to encourage us to do that, not tonight.
Any other comments for my colleagues? Thank you, councilman. Okay, I'll open it up to the public. Is there any one from the public like to speak matters pertaining to city business? Please step forward and state your name and address for the record. You have a three-minute limitation, of course.
Yeah, I'm a Dearborn resident. I have this ad from, or this event from the Dearborn Historic Museum, just bringing this forward on behalf of Jack.
Director Tate, Jack Tate.
So it's an Arab American Heritage Month at the Dearborn Historic Museum for March 31st. The time is noon to 2 PM. So it has Hina artists, food, activities for the kid, a great event to attend. So this is it, and for anyone that wants to join, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for bringing that forward for us. Anything else? Yeah, one second, we're going to, yeah, we have two things for the mayor, and I'll get back to the public, I apologize.
No, thank you, I'll be fairly quick. I think the first is, just to wish all the residents who are observing the holy month of Ramadan, a happy Ramadan. It is commencing before the next meeting. And so if, if myself is a little cranky because we'll be without water or, or food from sunrise to sunset, forgive me in advance, but just wishing all the residents a happy Ramadan. It's a spiritual month, one where you fast not just of food and water, but also of tongue, heart and, and several others. So excited for the month to begin. It's the holiest month for Muslims throughout the year. The second is just an announcement. So we have made an offer and hire for our new deputy director within DPW and facilities. It is Nicole Golich. And so just wanted to congratulate her. This is also the first time that a, that a woman has been in this role within the city of Dearborn's history. And so just really wanted to congratulate her, excited for her vision, her tenacity, and her eagerness to be part of the team in this new role, so.
Mayor, yeah, thank you very much for that selection. I could tell you that many of us have had great communications with Ms. Golich and, and her, under her tutelage of Director Hawkins. Every choice that you've made so far has been very good and it's been working well. We know that she will definitely assist. As that department expanded its authority tremendously. So we do appreciate her for accepting that role and look forward to it in the future. And as well, I do want to thank everyone too as far as, and remind them to hope they have a great blessed Ramadan. And I know that I will be fasting as I did in the past, and Councilman El Suafi, and I know the mayor, Councilman Hamud, are you in?
I'm, I've been up since 6 AM.
All right. So there will be, the meetings will still be going at the same time, but during the breaking of fast, we might take a real quick intermission or, or have someone take over for us. So I wanted to just echo the sentiments of the mayor and wish everybody a blessed and happy Ramadan. Now, we would like to open back up against the public, have some more comments left. I apologize for that orderness. Thank you, mayor. Yeah? Absolutely. Come up here to record and state your name and address for the record and.
Mr. Mayor and council, thank you. It's a pleasure to be before you.
Your name?
My name is Wanda Desha, 1125 Beaumont. I'm going to speak of something that's quite personal to myself and my husband. So I know I tried to time this down. There is some confusion and concern about the situation regarding our Dearborn Hills Golf Course. My husband and I are residents and both run golf leagues at the course. My husband is also an employee there. Last Monday, he was called to a meeting with the Parks and Rec Director and Assistant Director. They told him and a handful of other employees that the course was closing due to it losing money. Now, I know that our mayor told us that there were other plans to do repairs to the damage that it suffered due to the floods, the jammed rivers that were unmaintained. And I know you also stated that it was going to be a, quite a substantial fix, a six-figure fix as opposed to a lower $20,000 repair. Now, I know that last month, two of the log jams, thank goodness, were removed and cleared, and they were waiting for a bit, as far as I know, to clear the third jam. And that will allow all the water to flow off. Removing the two did allow the ponds to substantially decrease. Now, I know that there are five holes of the 18 that are damaged, and the groundskeeper, maintenance person apparently was let go, and they were told that someone from the city would maintain the lawn during this closure. I know that the groundskeeper had stated that approximately five of the holes that need lawn repair could be done, and it really wouldn't need much more than about a four-week timeframe to repair that new grass. So also a concern is it's losing money while it's closed. The banquet facility is no longer operating after mid-June. This could continue to go on and generate money for the city. I think the city is going to take a loss by shutting it all down, and I don't know what the overall repairs are going to involve other than just the lawn on the five holes. But I heard that possibly making it a walking park, biking park, and only a smaller course is something that's being considered. In this case, the city already has 40 parks. It has two nearby with Crowley Park being to the south and Lovegood being to the north of Dearborn Hills. They both have walking tracks. Dearborn Hills is the only public golf course in our city. And as far as I know, it was deeded with the agreement that it would remain a public golf course. It's our city's only one. Making it something other than that and the banquet facility with proper management could benefit the city financially. And I feel that making it something else is going to do a huge disservice and unjust as service to the community with all due respect.
Thank you, Mayor, man, for your comments.
Thank you.
If I may respond, Councilman?
Yes, mayor, you're right.
Yeah, so to the first points, the primary reason that the golf course is closed down is because of the damage that it sustained in the prior flooding. To your points, you alluded that a lot of the greens are no longer green, as well as, correct? If I may continue, as well as many of the log jams, although we've cleared out some of the big ones, what's happening is a lot of the dead trees are falling back into the river, creating new log jams. And so it takes a much more sophisticated plan than just removing the current log jams in order for us to sustain golfing throughout the year. Secondly, what I would allude to is, the golf course has, has not made money in 10 years. It's lost money every single year for the last 10 years. It's lost about $2.5 million actually in the last 10 years. And the loss that it sustains at an average of about $300,000 per year. As it pertains to any city employees, no city employee has been let go at the golf course. We might be parting ways with the contractor that we have maintaining the greens, but that's because we don't think we can come to an agreement on the price they want to charge to maintain those greens. We think we can actually bring it in-house to continue the maintenance of those greens and help revive and heal the course over this, over this period. And so we have not let go a single employee, and as the banquets continue through the end of June, based on the reservations that we had, we're going to keep those promises, but any employees, if they can be resigned to other parts within the Parks and Rec Department, that will happen. We have no intentions on parting ways with any employees from our end, as the city, as the employer, so I can also speak to that. As it pertains to additional plans at the golf course, at this point, our focus is on healing the greens that we have, and then having a conversation eventually about how we stop bleeding money at this golf course. Because if you were to ask me, you know, I think a sustainable loss every single year is also not something that the taxpayers can withstand, and so we have to have honest conversations about how we better manage our city assets, and it's not just Dearborn Hills Golf Course, it's our assets across the board. And so, we're always looking for opportunities for how we can at least break even at these cities' assets, as to not draw out of the general fund, in order for us to pay for and add more, higher quality services across the board. And so, I think exploring ideas for how you can generate more revenue is always a positive, and we welcome community input. And at any point, if decisions are going to be made about regarding Dearborn Hills Golf Course later down the line, because it's not our primary focus, we're happy to make sure that we have community participation about what occurs. To your points, and you spoke eloquently, that the course is deeded to the city as a golf course, and so there's also no intention on selling the golf course, and we know that it has to be preserved largely as a golf course. But in our conversations with potential groundskeepers, we're exploring more than just the clearing of log jams or the bringing back of greens, it's taking areas where water traditionally puddles, and maybe making those bio swells or rain gardens that it can absorb more water, or maybe creating natural, you know, kind of creeks that go into the Rouge River, because that's where water tends to puddle. And so, if we can take this opportunity to maybe redesign portions of the course as well, we're going to do so this season. But I think it's really important that we take the time to allow the course to heal, and not open it up when the course is damaged, charging people a full rate, and continually losing money. And to the final point, what I'll say is, opening up the course, you lose more money this year than closing the course, because that's just how Dearborn Hills Golf Course operates. It's operated at a loss, it's operated at a substantial loss, and it's, it's pretty disheartening.
Can I just say that I?
Ma'am, if you'd like to speak, please come up to the, if you'd like to respond, no, that's fine, but if you'd like to respond, just come up and respond to the microphone.
I completely agree, I have been on leagues and have run a league there for a minimum of 10 years. My fee per year, per person, has never increased.
Correct. There you go.
And I would be more than happy to pay more.
Right.
And keep this going and benefit it, because of course, it's going to benefit the community. And I totally get what you said about rejamming, and I know that in previous years, when it would flood, the course kind of was designed, I understood, to retain some of the water so the community wouldn't flood, and then it would always end up going off into the river with the jams, it wouldn't allow it to flow, so it just sat, and that was devastating. So, we understand that that definitely has to be probably a continuous process to keep that river clear.
Absolutely, and to your point earlier, that's why we cleared two of the biggest jams already, just to show that we are working on trying to, you know, heal the course, but we also have to come up with a longer-term strategy, because the river is actually not the responsibility of the city, it's the responsibility of the county.
That's right.
And so, we also want to come to some sort of agreement with the county about the long-term maintenance. Unfortunately, this has kind of fell to the wayside, and nobody's paid attention to what's been happening across the river, thus the flooding in the, over at Ford Field, as well as this golf course. So, we're hoping that we can take a season to heal, to think of a long-term strategy, and then come back next season with something new.
Well, I hope we can continue on with Dearborn Hills with the passion that I have for it.
Of course.